I'd like to call the special town meeting to order. Would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I've been advised by the town clerk that the warrant has been properly served. I would entertain a motion to dispense with a formal reading of the warrant. It's been moved, seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. I've nominated Richard Travers as assistant moderator for this meeting and would entertain a motion to appoint him. It's been moved, seconded, discussion, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted and declared unanimous.
Would the assistant moderator and the following tellers please stand to be sworn by the town clerk? Christopher Markey, Jack Manning, Peter Toppen, Penny Scott?
Allison Short.
Okay, sorry. Allison Short, Penny Scott, Pipes, Richard Travers, Christina Danielson, Maureen Manier, Linda Plowman, Susan Frankel, Ellen Kelly.
If you raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to uphold the position to which you've been appointed? Thank you.
And thank you all for your service tonight. Dignitary's visitor gallery is empty. I'd ask the chairman of the advisory committee, Jamie Gilmore, to introduce the advisory committee board members.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First, I want to thank Lindsay Desmo, who's our secretary, who's not here tonight, for all the work she did. But to introduce the board, I have our vice chairman, Lincoln Hyman, who's also our school committee liaison. We have Frank Judge, our past president, chairman. We have Anthony Antoniello, our capital planning committee liaison. Jeffrey Burns, our economic development committee liaison. Sean DeLacy, our public building committee liaison. Jerry Kelly, our public school committee liaison. Mark Santim, street acceptance committee and vote tech rep. And Mike Westort, our community preservation committee liaison. Thank you.
I'd ask Tony Vignani, chairman of the board of selectmen, to introduce the board members, the town administrator, town accountant, and town council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Starting at the far end is town council, Jim Toomey. Next to him is Maureen Kern. Next to her is Sean Harris. Then Marty O'Toole, John Danahue, town administrator Tricia Vankezi, and the finance director Nancy Holt.
Thank you, Tony. And would chairman of the school committee, Richard Hebert, introduce the board members and staff members with him tonight?
Good evening. Up to your left, you have Paul Donlin, our business director, John McCarthy, our superintendent, Mike Long, member of the school committee, and running a little late, but I'm sure they'll be here shortly, Robin Laverne and Brenda Bowen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May we have a moment of silence in honor of the following deceased town employees and officials? Martha A. Workman, deceased on June 20th, 2015, with the Situate Schools. Joseph Edward Fitzsimmons Jr., deceased July 23rd, 2015, firefighter. Masha Devere, deceased August 3rd, 2015, Situate Schools. Pamela Kane, deceased August 23rd, 2015, Situate Schools. Maxine Leary, deceased September 5th, 2015, Situate Schools. Robert E. Snow, deceased September 18th, 2015, retired Situate firefighter. Joan Curtin, September 26th, 2015, Situate Schools, retired. May they have everlasting peace and thank you to them for their service to our town. My name is Richard Bowen. I'm the town moderator. The moderator chairs the meeting and decides questions of order. I do not vote on articles. Please let me take a couple of minutes to explain to you how the meeting works and the rules. Town of Situate has two branches of government. The executive branch represented here by the selectmen, the school committee, and the legislative branch. That's you. The town meeting is the legislative branch, and each of you is a citizen legislator. The executive branch has put various requests for action and appropriation before you for you, the citizen legislators, to act upon. You may ask questions of the members present. This is your meeting to get the information that you need. You each have a very important friend in your important work. The advisory committee is your board. The advisory committee is the town meeting's standing committee that meets all year round to examine the executive branch budgets. The advisory committee works hard, serving as their watchdog, and will make recommendations to you about each of the executive branch requests to you. You should pay close attention to its reports. Like any legislative body, we operate under certain legislative rules. These laws and rules derive from state law, the parliamentary manual town meeting time, the charter, the bylaws, and custom. Here is a quick summary. All non-voters, except for professional consultants advising town boards, must sit in the non-voter section, which is right over here on the left front bleacher. Ordinarily, only registered voters may address the meeting. However, I will assume the consent of the meeting to allow non-voters to speak, provided they are duly recognized and unless a timely objection to their speaking is raised. Persons wishing to address the meeting must, each time rising to speak, identify themselves to the meeting by name and address. This traditional courtesy shows respect to those present and helps in keeping the meeting minutes. Speakers representing a board, community group, or client should state this relationship to the meeting. If you are an article sponsor, please make your motion before you make your speech. Otherwise, I will rule you out of order. After making a motion, an article sponsor will be allowed up to 10 minutes for presentation. Sponsors of resolutions will be allowed five minutes. Sponsors need not use the full time allotted and are reminded that the town meeting has always respected the proverb of brevity as the soul of wit. All motions must be seconded, and no motion is in order until it has a second. Town meeting members are encouraged to speak from the center microphone, just down here. I will attempt to recognize speakers in the order that they arrive at the various microphones, but if it gets busy sometimes, it's difficult to tell who got to the microphone first. So it's easier if you go to the middle. Only after recognized by the moderator may a member address the meeting. Shout out from the floor, or speaking without recognition shows disrespect to your fellow town meeting members and will not be allowed. Speakers from the floor are allowed five minutes on the first round of discussion on each article and three minutes on the second round. A speaker on the floor who wishes to address the meeting for a second time on an article must wait until persons who have not yet spoken have had their turn. Speakers, please confine your remarks to the motion that is on the floor. Please address only matters of general interest. Do not indulge in personal discussion or in any way attack the motives of the meeting member. You may ask questions of any town official through the moderator. Be advised that a town official may choose not to respond or may respond in a manner that you find unsatisfactory. Neither the moderator nor the meeting has the power to compel an answer, and so you must draw your own conclusions from the response that you get. Should you tire of debate, you may suffer in silence or you may offer the motion, "I move the question." Please remember this important procedural point. You may not make a motion to move the question after making a speech. Please just make the motion and save your speech. Remember, "I move the question." A point of order relates only to questions of procedure and is not a mechanism for reviving debate on an article or prolonging debate. There is no such procedural point as points of information. A question about an article should be raised only during the debate on that article. On voice votes, I listen to hear whether the motion passes or fails. If you question my hearing, please rise. If seven or more voters rise, I will ask for a teller counted vote. Tellers will count only those persons in the bleachers or in the floor seating sections. Please, persons standing away from the seating will not be counted. So if you're standing in the back milling around, you'll lose your vote. Section 20,150G of the bylaws allows the moderator to declare two-thirds votes. If the moderator's declaration is immediately questioned by seven or more voters, we will take account. The acoustics in the room are bad. If you can't hear me properly or any of the speakers, there are lots of empty seats available for you to move to. Please silence your phones. A wireless microphone is available to those who wish it. Kindly raise your hand, and the runner will bring it to you. The runner is over here. When I recognize you, you may speak.
No honorary resolutions, nothing?
Okay. Preliminary reports before we get to the Article I reports. There are none. Okay, let's go. Article I, from the board of selectmen. Chairman Vignani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town hear or act upon any reports from town officers or committees.
It's been moved and seconded. By way of discussion, we will be receiving reports from Chairman Vignani and then from the superintendent, John McCarthy. Go ahead, Tony.
Thank you. Before I get started, I just want to actually thank the advisory committee. They do a great job putting that booklet together and really outlining all the topics of discussion for tonight. It takes an awful lot of work. I did it for six years, and, you know, I appreciate it, and they definitely deserve a round of applause, so. So basically, Article I gives boards the opportunity to report the status of town business to you. Typically, at the annual town meeting... I did something wrong. Typically, at the annual town meeting, we go over the financial condition of the town and how it relates to the budget. Tonight, what I wanted to do is focus on the capital projects that the town has going underway. About five years ago, the board of selectmen made a deliberate act to focus our efforts on neglected buildings and infrastructure repair that the town needed. And currently, there are five major projects that the town has going on. And I'm just going to give a quick summary on them and a status in no particular order. First one is renovation of the library. Trustees of the library and the library director applied for and received a grant of $5 million. They fundraised and raised north of $600,000, which covered about 40% of the expense of the library. That project is currently underway. It's in the demolition stage. If you've driven down Branch Street, you've seen that. And it expects to be completed in November of 2016. Second project that we have underway right now is our water lines. You know, due to the constant instances of brown water that most of you have probably seen in your drinking water, the board spearheaded the effort to replace 22 miles of very old water line, upwards of 75 years old. Currently, we've replaced 15 miles of this water line. We're in phase... the end of phase two. We have one more phase left, and that project is expected to be completed in early 2017. Another project that we have underway right now is the middle school. We're in the process, or actually, in December or January, town meeting and the ballot passed an override to move middle school from Gates over to the high school. Gates, the Gates building is almost 100 years old. It doesn't comply with handicap codes. It's in poor physical condition, and it's not stretched to meet the current educational models. That project is currently in the design stage and expects to have bids in December of this year. And it's expected to be completed by September of 2017. Another big project that we have going on is four shore protection. Over the past five years, we've allocated, I think, somewhere between $5 and $7 million to seawalls and four shore protection. And currently, the project that we're working on is a $3 million project. It's on Oceanside Road, and it expects to be completed by the summer of 2016. And the last project that we have going on of these major ones is the public safety complex. That's a... the project is moving the two fire station and the police station, which flank Town Hall, over to the corner of Manlot and Route 3A. And we'll talk about this project a lot in a little while. The other project that I want to say is on the drawing board right now, and I know is on the top of all the board of selectmen's lists, is addressing our senior center needs. That is currently in the development stage, and we're trying to figure out what the best place, size, and functionality that that building will serve. So coinciding with all this capital plans, we had to make sure that our financial condition was strong. And a lot of credit goes to our financial team, which consists of the town treasurer, Pam, who's sitting over there, the financial director Nancy, and the town administrator Tricia Vankezi. What they've done is they've implemented controls, systems, and reporting, which has been recognized by national, local government organizations as spectacular. They've developed a five-year rolling capital plan. They've routinely allocated money to stabilization funds for large capital projects, and they've identified new revenue sources and new cost-saving measures. All of this has resulted in a very strong financial condition for our town. We've got a very favorable bond rating at AA+, which allows us to borrow money at a very low interest rate, and over these projects has saved millions of dollars of interest costs. I think you can probably see a common thread here. Our capital projects of the last 60 to 100 years have reached their useful life. We've become... they've become exhausted and really don't meet the current needs and function codes that they need for their services. And the town overall is taking positive steps towards restoring this infrastructure and the buildings that the town needs, and unfortunately, that have been neglected over the last several decades. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening. I'm pleased to report tonight that the middle school building project is in the final stages of completing the design phase. The design has gone through 30, 60, and 90% construction review by the Massachusetts School Building Authority. At each of these milestones, it undergoes a thorough cost estimation, and I'm pleased to report that we are on schedule and on budget. In addition to the MSBA reviews, the design has also been reviewed by a commissioning agent, the planning board, the conservation commission, and both the police and fire departments. In all cases, input from various boards and departments has been incorporated into the design. The design of the building has been praised by both the MSBA and the state's treasurer's office for its thoughtful planning and ability to adapt to changing educational delivering models of the 21st century. When this school is opened in September of 2017, the New Situate Middle School will be a model of how buildings should function to support the education of generations of children in a rapidly changing age of innovation. We are now entering the final pre-construction phase of bidding and awarding of contracts. We have four general contractors and 82 subcontractors that have been pre-approved to bid on this project. There is a lot of interest in this project, which hopefully will bring competition. We expect the contract to be awarded and executed in December, and construction to begin shortly thereafter. Once the contract is awarded to a general contractor, they will have no more than 600 days to complete the project and prepare for the opening of school in September of 2017. New Situate Middle School will definitely be something the entire town will be proud of. Thank you.
Before we move to a vote on the motion, I'd like to recognize Representative Jim Cantwell, who has joined us and is seated over to my right. Okay, we've heard the reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article II, on the motion, Chairman Vignani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town transfer the sum of $740,000 for the purpose of balancing the fiscal year 2016 operating budget pursuant to Article IV, VII, and IX of the April 13th, 2015 Annual Town Meeting Warrants as follows. Move to the Water Department expenses from retained earnings, $350,000. Move to the Sewer Department expense from retained earnings, $315,000. Move to the School Department from the contributory health insurance, $50,000. And move to the Police Department from contributory health expense, $25,000.
It's been moved, seconded. Go ahead, Tony.
Thank you. This is essentially a bookkeeping or accounting moving of funds. The first two, or the first one anyways, deals with the Water Department, and that is moving funds for increased electric bills. So what we're doing here is we're increasing the budget that we're in the current fiscal year in, and we're basing this on the numbers that were the actuals for last year that just finished. So we're increasing the water electric bill for $150,000... excuse me, that's $78,000. And then we're also adding about $217,000 to our debt expense this year because we're actually getting phase two of our water pipe plan, which I just talked about a second ago, done earlier than we expected. The Sewer Department, we're increasing that by $150,000, and then we need $165,000 to go to repair of an aeration machine and some clarifiers. The other two expenses, or the other two transfers actually, are due to the fact that our health insurance came in lower than we expected. That's a shared expense. Two-thirds of that money goes to the school. One-third goes to the town. The school is going to use theirs for technology, and the town is going to use theirs in the police department payroll. All of this doesn't impact the taxpayers. It's just transfers funds from one account to another. Thank you.
From advisory, Jamie Gilmore, chairman.
Yes, this is basic, good financial housekeeping. The advisory committee voted in unanimous support, seven to zero.
Discussion. There being no one at the mics, approval requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article III, on the motion, Selectman Curran.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. Welcome to town meeting. I move that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $1,150,000 into the stabilization fund to replace amounts transferred to pay fiscal year 2015 bills associated with record-breaking winter storms.
It's moved, seconded. Ms. Curran.
This is another one of those budget housekeeping articles. Last town meeting during April, we moved the same amount into... from our stabilization fund into the budget lines to pay for the costs. Tonight, we're requesting you to move those funds back into our stabilization fund. Today, the stabilization fund has a balance of $2,310,000. By moving these funds in, the balance will be $3,450,000. The board of selectmen recommends approval of this motion.
From the advisory committee, Chairman Gilmore.
Again, this is a standard practice to replenish what we spent last year in the wonderful storms. The advisory committee voted unanimous, seven to zero, in favor of this article.
Discussion. There being no one at the mics, transfers involving stabilization require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article IV, on the motion, Selectman Curran.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town reduce the amount authorized pursuant to Article IV of the April 13th, 2015 Annual Town Meeting Warrant relative to general fund debt by reducing the appropriation by $1,556,591 to reflect the actual cost of debt service for general fund projects for fiscal year 2016.
It's moved, seconded. Ms. Curran.
Thank you. The results of approving this article will actually lower our current fiscal year line for our overall debt service. In June 2015, the town issued a bond for all three building projects that are before us and for our water main replacement project. In April, the annual town budget line reflected that amount. As a result of lower interest rates, the cost of the bond came in $1,556,000 less than what we budgeted for in April. Approval of this motion will merely correct the line within our current budget year and reduce our debt service amount by that dollar figure.
From the advisory committee, Chairman Gilmore.
This is basic accounting, again reconciling the difference between the estimated amount in April to the actual amount. Due to our great bond rating, advisory committee voted unanimous, seven to zero, in support of the article.
Discussion. There being no one at the mics, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Brief announcement, there are 360 people attending. Thank you for coming out. Article V, on the motion, Selectman Curran.
Mr. Moderator, I move that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, the town appropriates $84,538.98 in unexpended funds initially borrowed to finance costs of the Wampatac Elementary School remodeling project as approved under Article II of the warrant at the special town meeting held on May 17th, 2010, which project is now complete and for which no further financial liability remains, to pay costs of the middle school project, which project was authorized by vote of the town under Article II of the warrant at the December 3rd, 2014 Special Town Meeting, provided, however, that the amount authorized to be borrowed for the middle school project but not yet borrowed shall be reduced to the extent of the funds allocated by this vote from the Wampatac Elementary School Project to the middle school project.
It's been moved, seconded. Discussion, Ms. Curran.
What we are requesting you to do here today is merely take $85,000 that is currently sitting in our budget line and move it to the middle school project. We are not asking to increase what we're spending on the middle school project. The language in the motion specifies that this is specifically to offset the borrowing and thus is a reduction in the amount that we will borrow for the middle school project. So I just want to be clear that this is not increasing the middle school project budget. And the board of selectmen recommends approval of this motion.
From the advisory committee, Mr. Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As Ms. Curran mentioned, after this project was completed, there was unspent monies of The project, which was very beneficial to Wampatac School, consisted of some enhancements such as new tiling in the cafeteria, grade three and four hallway, an HVAC system to improve air circulation. There was enlarged skylights to brighten the foyer. There's a converted boiler system from oil to gas, and the beginnings of a comprehensive new security system. This unspent money, which Ms. Curran mentioned, will be used to offset the cost of the middle school project, authorizing by vote under Article II of the December 3rd, 2014 Special Town Meeting Warrant, and so is to reduce the amount owed to by the town. The advisory committee recommends unanimous approval of this motion.
From the School Department, Superintendent McCarthy.
There's no further liability on this building. Wampatac project is finished. This money is just sitting there. Again, the idea here is to return it back to the town to be used against the cost of the middle school borrowing. And once again, just to reiterate, this will not increase the amount of the middle school project. It simply decreases the amount we need to borrow.
Discussion from the floor. There being no one at the mics, approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Selectman Curran, Article VI.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate $5,850,000 from the net premium paid to the town upon the sale of bonds issued for designing, constructing, and equipping the Situate Middle School and the Situate High School auditorium, and the renovation of the existing Situate High School space, which bonds were approved by a vote of the town passed at the special town meeting held on December 3rd, 2014, Article II, Section 2. Designing, constructing, and equipping the public safety complex, which bonds were approved by a vote of the town passed at the special town meeting held on December 3rd, 2014, Article I. And Section 3, designing, renovating, and adding to the public library, which bonds were approved by a vote of the town passed at the special town meeting held on November 4th, 2013, Article 12. Each of which is the subject of a proposition two-and-a-half debt exclusion to pay costs for each respective project being financed by such bonds or notes. The amount of net premium allocable to each of the projects described above shall be $3,575,000, $1,155,000, and and fifty-five thousand dollars, and three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars respectively, and shall reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project by the same amount.
It's been moved, seconded. Seconded, discussion, Selectman Curran.
I got all the easy ones. So first of all, I just want to be very clear that this article is not asking us to borrow any additional funds. I understand that there was some public information out there that was incorrect. When we issued the bond for our building projects in June of two thousand and fifteen, the premium is defined as the amount the purchaser of the bond pays to Situate to offset the interest costs of that bond. The amount we issued was seventy-one million dollars, and the premium offered by the purchaser was five million dollars less, which reduced the amount that we would have to pay interest on to sixty-six million. What we are asking you to approve tonight is to use this premium to pay down the principal in one lump sum. The Department of Revenue requires us to use the premium in one of two ways. Either you pay down the principal by paying the full amount now, or you pay it over the term of the debt, which would be twenty-five years, and we would have to come here and do this annually. Our finance team believes that the option before you to pay it down in one lump sum of five million dollars is the better choice for the taxpayers. As a result, the town will be paying less interest over the term of the bond by reducing the principal through this action, and the Board of Selectmen recommends approval of this motion.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. DeLacy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for all being here this evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Sean DeLacy, and I'm going to be following Ms. Curran and reviewing Article Six here. As you all know, in June of two thousand and fifteen, there was roughly the eighty-six-point-eight million-dollar bond issued for the school projects, et cetera. When the bond is issued, you receive essentially what is a cash premium or an interest for having that bond issued. And the town, as Ms. Curran alluded to, really only has a couple options on what you do with that cash premium. The Advisory Committee voted unanimously in support of this article for two reasons. The first was obviously this is the most clean method. We don't need to be coming back here every year for twenty-five years approving essentially a small payment to pay down the principal, or a little bit of cash to pay down the principal of this bond. And the second reason is because it immediately reduces the tax liability that each one of us as a resident would be paying for the town. So essentially, it reduces our overall tax liability. Thank you.
Discussion from the floor. There being no one at the mics, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? So voted and declared unanimous vote. Article Seven, on the motion, Chairman Vignani.
I move that the town transfer the sum of seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars from capital stabilization fund, transfer the sum of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-five cents from the unspent capital project articles listed below totaling nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-eight cents, and further to authorize a treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow the sum of five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for the purpose of designing, constructing, and furnishing a new public safety complex pursuant to Article One of the December third, two thousand and fourteen special town meeting with said additional amounts to fund the base bid set out in the general contractor bid documents and all costs incidental thereto as printed in the warrant provided to all the voters at this meeting.
It's been moved, seconded. Discussion, Chairman Vignani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Before we get to the point, I think it's appropriate to go back and kind of summarize how we got here. Back in two thousand and twelve, a committee was formed to assess our public facilities. They reported that both the fire and the police buildings, which were built in the nineteen-fifties, required extensive renovations, had significant functional issues, lacked amenities, and required significant upgrades. At that point in time, the Board of Selectmen decided to get a feasibility study done by Doran Whittier, and they estimated that it would cost about eight-point-five million dollars to repair those two buildings. We also asked them to figure out what it would cost to build a new public safety complex, and they said it would cost about sixteen-point-two million dollars. The board chose to pursue the complex not only to solve the space and efficiency issues, but also because the police station does not meet safety codes. We'd be able to combine and have joint dispatching, which would be more efficient and increase our response times. We'd be able to build an emergency operations center. We're the only town on the South Shore, coastal community on the South Shore that doesn't have one. And also, for decades, we've talked about how we can reduce the response time for the fire department to the West End and to Minnetonka, and this would help accomplish that also. We came before you in town meeting in December, and then at that meeting, we told you it would cost sixteen-point-two million dollars to build this building, and that it would affect the average home in Situate by one hundred and forty-nine dollars per year for twenty-five years. Then, after that, we went to bid with the interest rates were low at that point in time. We took the bond to market, and because of our strong financial condition and our strong bond rating, we were able to secure a low-interest loan, which reduced the cost of the average home to about one hundred and thirty-seven dollars per home, per year, for twenty-five years. At that point in time, the design began. There were dozens and dozens of meetings with all the fire chiefs and the lieutenants and police chiefs and what have you to really figure out what the functionality of this building had to be. It continued through the normal bidding process. At the sixty percent mark of the project, we found that our estimates for the cost were above what we expected them to be, and the design team went in there and they made cuts to the project under our mandate of not affecting the functionality of the building. So they cut the ancillary things, the exterior aspects, the bricks of the building and what have you. Our goal all along has been not to move the footprint of the two buildings that are on either side of Town Hall down the street. We are trying to build a building that's going to last fifty to seventy-five years, both in size, space, functionality, and services. As the two buildings before it, they lasted fifty or sixty years as well. We went through the process and we hit the ninety percent mark, and we still exceeded the cost estimates or the money that had been appropriated at town meeting. At that point, we decided to go to bid with the project, and we had to break the project up into six different groups. There was a base project, which included all of the building the way it is, except we omitted the third bay for the fire station and the second Sallyport for the police station, a trullus, some heated floors, and I think some landscaping. And that went out to bid with the base building and then those five alternative additions. Our hopes were, because the market was building and was getting, that we'd get competitive bids like Superintendent McCarthy just said, and that the bids would become below the base project, and we'd be able to add all these other projects back in. Unfortunately, the economy that gave us lower interest rates also increased people wanting to build projects, and it caused the price of construction to grow up rapidly. The project for our base bid came in a million and a half dollars above what we expected. The project to complete the two functional aspects, the Sallyport and the third bay, will cost an additional seven hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. And that brings us to our meeting tonight, and what the board has talked about since we found this out. We think that there's four possible options at this point in time. And that's what we're bringing for you tonight, and we're asking you, the one we're actually bringing you is what we think is the best option. But here are the four choices. The first one is not to pass this article, not appropriate any more money to this project and just abandon the project. If we do that, the fire and police will be in the buildings now that we know that are not efficient, we know that are inferior buildings, and we'll essentially lose the million dollars that we've put into the design of this building. Not a good choice. The second option is to not pass this article and try and build the building with the money that's been allocated, which is thirteen million dollars for the building. The other money was for construction and other things. And this may sound compelling to many of you, but after meeting with the designers, I found out a lot more about the project. I found out if we had to do that, that we would have to cut between fifteen and twenty percent of the space of the building, and that the plan and the functionality of the building would be completely different than what we brought before you. Somebody said at that meeting, they said, "It's not like removing a conference room or getting rid of a gym or making the emergency center smaller." He said, "You'd essentially have to go in and take the fire department out." So you could have the bays, but you couldn't have the fire department. So on top of that, once we went to bid, we'd be in the same boat that we are now, potentially. We'd go out to bid, we'd put it out there, the market is unpredictable right now, and we could be before you in, you know, six or eight months of time, dealing with the market that we have right now, where we thought it would come in at thirteen million dollars, and it could come in higher than that. On top of that, the other point that I wanted to bring up is, the building would have to be completely redesigned. It's a smaller building, so it is not the building that they've already designed, and it would cost about a half a million dollars of new structural and design and configuration costs. So that's option two. Option three is actually what we're proposing tonight. We're proposing that we do the base building and that we don't increase anybody's tax dollars. That means no override. We'll fund the million and a half dollars through the three things I mentioned in the article, which are, A, the stabilization fund that we've built over the years, B, the funds that are available through projects that have been completed over the years but have come in under budget, and three, if needed, we'll borrow the money from our regular annual capital plan over the next three years. And I say if it's needed because included in this project is a contingency amount which may or may not be used. So that would complete the building, the base model, without the third bay, without the second Sallyport, but would have no increase to the taxpayer. The fourth option that we have is going to be discussed in the next article, and that's passing the base unit, which I just discussed, and the Sallyport, and the third bay. All of the Board of Selectmen believe that the full project is the best project to go into the future because of the functional components that they have, and we'll discuss the funding of that motion in the next article. So those are the options. I must say, we were all very disappointed and surprised when the bids exceeded the expectations and the estimates that we had there. I've learned a lot about the bidding process and the imperfections of the system. The building market is obviously in a very strong growing trend, as seen by many towns. There's a project in Randolph, there's a project in Westwood, that recently are in the same position that we are. At this point, I believe it's in the best interest of the town to pass Article Number Seven. It won't increase your tax bill. The building will maintain most of the functionality that we need, and I think that abandoning the project and throwing away a million dollars is not the right choice. And I think that building, a building that doesn't meet the needs and the functional capacities that the police and the fire department need with an additional cost of five hundred thousand dollars and really maintaining the market risk that we're going through right now is not the right path either. So those are our options, and the Selectmen voted in favor of Article Number Seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Vignani did a great job summarizing the background of this article. As well, when you walked in, there was a nice two-page, two-sided, one-page summary which describes a lot of the background information, frequently asked questions, kind of explains why the estimate came in higher than the bid. So hopefully you got a chance to pick that up on your way in. As Mr. Vignani mentioned, the general contractor's bid for this project came in about ten percent over the estimates. The article considers a variety of funding sources consisting of transfers of seven-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars in unallocated funds from the capital stabilization fund, transfers totaling one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in unspent general fund articles, which is summarized in the advisory book. There's about twenty items which make up that amount, and to borrow an additional amount of five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars with corresponding future debt service to be supported within the existing levy limit through the general fund operating budget and not to add to the debt exclusion. Again, this does not add an extra tax burden onto the taxpayers, and the Advisory Committee recommended unanimous approval of this motion.
Discussion from the floor. I'll see Mr. Brown evaporated from the middle. Oh, of course. Who gets the short straw? Go ahead, Chief. Thank you. Go ahead, Chief.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to be here to consider the future of public safety for the town of Situate. I sense the frustration of some, us coming to the floor to ask for additional funding to move forward in this important project. Our planning team is frustrated as well. We have been meeting and planning for over two years to bring the town the most efficient and effective public safety we can. The cost to build has gone up and the cost to borrow has come down. Overall, we still have the opportunity to bring you the public safety complex you voted for last winter for close to the same cost, if not a few dollars less, to taxpayers. I won't get into the numbers, but I would like to review why we feel the need to construct this building now. This morning, I was looking at the past construction plans to build two fire stations to improve the response times to Minnetonka, North Situate, and the West End. This was after years of planning following the tragic house fire on Haveli Road in nineteen ninety-five. The date of the plan was August seventeenth, two thousand and one. This proposal passed the town meeting and failed at the ballot by less than three hundred votes fourteen years ago. It was fourteen years ago that we last talked about this proposal. Many had thought a more efficient and less costly proposal would come out in the following years. Obviously, it did not. In two thousand and twelve, when discussion started of combining dispatch for the fire and police departments, it was clear we have yet to resolve the challenges we have with response times. The end result was to design the building before us to meet the various needs we have in public safety. The location on three A will reduce the response times to the areas in need by approximately two minutes, while keeping the neighborhoods closer to the current station within the recommended standards for response times. Please remember, fire has the ability to double in size every thirty seconds, and the chances of surviving a cardiac arrest are reduced by ten percent for every minute that goes by without fibrillation. Response times are critical for everyone in town. To reduce costs, this building has shared space for the needs of fire and police. The fitness room, combined dispatch training room, and an EOC, or Emergency Operations Center, will be used by both. The EOC will provide us a platform to plan, manage, and coordinate our resources with state agencies and utility companies we deal with in any large event, especially on our ongoing coastal storms. You have heard we have enacted the state of emergency more than any other town in Massachusetts, yet we are one of the few coastal towns without an EOC. The third bay will provide us with the operational flexibility to meet the needs of our apparatus for years to come. We need this space for an engine, an ambulance, and potentially a frontline command vehicle. This space gives us the ability to house a backup engine, stage our ladder, or national guard vehicles, short-term if necessary during a large event. Statistically, the fire department has multiple calls twenty percent of the time, most of these being medical calls. We do our best to run a backup ambulance, but this only works when our apparatus are in quarters. If not, we must rely on mutual aid for an out-of-town ambulance. Mutual aid ambulances average twelve-to-fifteen-minute response times. The public safety complex will provide the space to spread our resources so we can run an engine and an ambulance from the station, significantly improving the EMS and fire response to Minnetonka, North Situate, and the West End. In closing, I would like to thank all of you for your support to public safety, and we hope you will consider these two articles to provide the necessary infrastructure to enable us to give the best service to you and your families. Thank you. Thank you.
Our fire chief, pardon me, our police chief. That was our fire chief. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you all for coming. Last year when we were here, the last thing on anybody's mind was having to come back before this floor with funding issues. Over the last two and a half to three years, the effort that went into coming up with the design and the building that we did come up with is monumental. There was nothing that wasn't looked at. Everything that went into this building, from the police side and the fireside, was incorporating all today's best practices and functionality and trying to incorporate that into a budget which we could afford. The, when we started to run into certain money issues and things had to, we started to have to make cuts, these cuts were painful right off the bat. One of the cuts that we, the police department, had to make was a Sallyport. Many of you probably had no idea what a Sallyport was up until recently, when you read about it in the paper and probably saw it on social media. On top of the Sallyport, literally on top of it, was scheduled to be storage space for the police department. The police department is burdened with, despite the fact that we've had archive retention and we have records problems. We have to maintain certain records and we have to maintain them for a long time. We've gone through a process, we were able to eliminate probably two-thirds of the records that we were keeping in our existing building. However, we have to have space for these records in the, down the road. By cutting the second Sallyport, we lost what was probably going to be eighty to ninety percent of our storage, including the archives and certain record retention and other storing, storage capabilities. The, with the one Sallyport, it just didn't make sense and it wasn't cost-effective to try to put storage above that one unit. The, I've heard a lot about response times in the last few weeks, as far as, you know, the police department response times aren't affected by the relocation of this building. Most of the time, ninety-something percent of the time, we're on the road anyways. So our response times aren't affected. What, what is affected, and it's the fire department's response time. I have been in Minutet, and I have been in North Situate doing CPR on people. Okay, when you have blue lights show up in front of your house, we have the ability to keep you, and training, to keep you alive until the fire department gets there. There is nothing like the feeling, whether you're a police officer or whether you're a civilian, of seeing those red lights show up. Those red lights make a difference. They save lives. They have the ability, they have the equipment and the training to save lives. So for anybody to stand before this floor ever and say that response times in fire department status doesn't mean anything, it's disingenuous, it's irresponsible. The, this building, as I had said, there's a lot of thought has gone into this building over the years, and, you know, nothing in this building was taken lightly. This is not the Taj Mahal. There are no unnecessary amenities in this building. Everything that is in this building is needed within the building. The parking area was cut down, it was cut down due to conservation issues. The spacing right now for civilians is somewhere around forty spaces. We need those spaces. I'm already worried if that, if that's enough spaces. When we have training in this building and when we have the need for additional resources, like on July third and during storms, we're probably going to be parking all over the lawn up there. Forty spaces is not a lot of spaces. We need that. We've cut back on additional things. We will make that up down the road. Why, one of the questions was, why was a Sallyport if it's so important to the functionality of this building? Why was that on the chopping blocks? It was on the chopping block because it was the end of the building. It would be the easiest thing to try to add back onto the building down the road. It wouldn't be cost-effective to try to do it down the road. You'd never get it done for what it's going to cost to just add it on today. It would, the price would probably be double or triple that down the road. So I'm asking for your support on Article Seven and Article Eight. There's been a lot of work going into this and everything that has, all the work that has gone into this building, it's been done with the best interests of the town of Situate and its fire department and its police department. Thank you.
The required report from the Capitol Planning Committee, Christopher Karshia.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Capitol Planning Committee voted unanimously to support this article.
Now to the floor. Gentlemen to my left.
Mr. Moderator, my name is James Hunt. I live on Manlot Road. I am a director butler to the project, and I'll speak only to Article Seven. Had the board of selectmen, in their wisdom, elected to move both Article Seven and Article Eight to an override, this discussion would be completely different, and my position would probably have changed, could very well have changed. As a director butler to the project, I would like nothing better than to have emergency medical services literally in my backyard, but regrettably, I must speak against Article Seven as written. And I have here the top ten reasons why I object to the Article Seven as written, and I will forego our reasons ten through, ten through three, with all due respect to Dave Letterman, and only address my top two. First of all, on July twenty-seventh, I'm sorry, on July fourteenth, the Public Building Committee met and heard from the design team that they had to cut back the building, cut back the third fire bay, the second Sallyport, and several other deletions in the interest of the budget. But given those cuts, the budget was intact and the estimates were on track for a slightly reduced building size. Two months later, only two months later, the bids came in thirteen percent in excess of that estimate, in only two months. At the October fourteenth Selectmen's Meeting, Selectman Harris made a very proficient comment saying that that estimator should never be rehired, and I heartily agree. For price escalation of thirteen percent in two months, somebody didn't do their job. And the taxpayers are being held hostage to that lack of professional performance. We're here tonight to pay for that error. I find that unfair, and certainly not in my definition of professional. My number-one reason for standing in opposition is the sacrificing of our capital stabilization fund. For the past six years, I have been in this meeting, listening to our town administrator and our board of selectmen roll out this capital, this rolling capital plan scheme, and scheme is not a good word, a system, and I heartily endorsed it because up until this town administrator arrived, we had no capital plan, and we are here tonight because of that lack of a capital plan. Situate never had an intelligent capital plan, hence the Gate School, and hence our deteriorating elementary schools. So I voted every year to transfer somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars every year of my money, of all of your money, into that capital stabilization fund with the sure knowledge that the day would come when the balance of that fund would be sufficient to offset some serious capital repairs. Not this project. This project's already been funded. This project has already been bonded. And now we're being told that we have to sacrifice my savings, your savings, because a design team hired an estimator that didn't get the job done. That's not fair, that's not professional, and I cannot vote for Article Seven. Thank you.
Gentlemen to my left.
Tom Robotham, fifteen Manlot. The initial presentation, we were told that we have a project over sixteen million that will not meet the needs of police and fire without additional spending. But we were also told that perhaps for eight-point-five million, we could through a renovation, it wouldn't be a new building. I think that we should not support Article Seven and instead look at that eight-point-five million dollar option, and with that additional, you know, seven million plus we'd be saving, we could have raises for police and fire possibly, or other things that would enhance their ability to serve the town. Thank you.
Gentlemen to my right.
Thank you, my name is Ken Conway. I live at fifteen Eagles Nest Road, and I come here with a very different view than I think some of you have here. I don't appreciate having all these special ad hoc meetings. We only get three hundred and sixty, and I appreciate everybody coming, but we don't get the thousands of people that we get for the big meetings. And because of that, that's why we run all these capital improvement programs through these meetings, so that special interest groups can get what they want. Nope. I think we're on the precipice of having financial irresponsibility. I believe in capital plans. Five-year plans are fabulous. I've built, not personally, but my company has built close to a billion dollars of capital buildings. I know what it takes to build it, and I know that you could have, we could have spent two billion on those buildings, and we could have spent a half a billion dollars on those buildings. I also know something else. Every time that we combine departments or combine buildings, we had significant cost-reduction programs. What I see in the safety building, and I want to have a new safety building, so let's start with that, is we actually have two dispatch groups. Why aren't we having one dispatch group? And as much as I hate saying that we don't have as many people, over time, salaries are going to go down because we don't have as many people, we're not going to pay their pension, we're not going to pay their healthcare costs, and that money is going to add up into hundreds of thousands of dollars of savings. So here's the big picture of what we're facing tonight. The safety building is over budget. The library, and I stand, somebody can correct me if I'm incorrect about this, we were supposed to raise five million dollars to help fund that building, that library. Somewhere, we raised a half a million dollars. Now we're paying for that, and we didn't, we heard that of some great program about thirty minutes ago, that that was fabulous. We're Town Hall, well, that's coming down the road, we're going to have, I have no idea, other than that's going to be tens of millions of dollars. We already heard tonight that now we're interested in adding the senior center. Why didn't we combine the senior center with the library? We could have done that for the same amount of money, sold the old senior center that we have, and had a great place to have our seniors very, very quickly. There's many things that we can do like this, but we're not thinking out of the box. We're thinking about, here are the few things that we want, we've got individual silos, everybody wants their own building, everybody wants their own things, and you can't have it, because we're spending it like crazy. I've never seen a cost-reduction program presented for any of the buildings or any of the facilities that use the word efficiency that I heard tonight. Efficiency means you spend less money for the same thing. And I don't hear, I don't hear all the people that we're going to cut by doing this. I don't hear, well, all I hear about, which is good news, is our response time is going to get better. That's great. But we could design that building, and I, I don't agree with, there's only four options. We can design that building in the same square footage, add a lot less money, and quite frankly, at the first cost estimate, what, at the sixty percent timeframe that we were talking about, where we're over then, we should have redesigned the building right then. We shouldn't have just kept going along, knowing we're going to go to one of these special meetings, I call them an ad hoc meeting, so that we can, you know, get the vote approved with three hundred and sixty votes. This is absolutely insane to run it down that way. I guess my last thought on this is, there are ways to do these things. There are combinations that can be made that can actually give us the kind of facilities and the supports that we want and that we can afford to pay for. But you can't take everything in individual buckets. You have to look at them together, you have to be creative about it, you have to have people willing to do it, or you have to be willing to tell them you can't have it. So tonight, depending on the response from this, I'll just throw one other note out. I'm thinking about running for selectmen. Let's see what we can do tonight.
Speaker to my right.
Hi, Deb Reberk, two oh two Old Oak and Bucket Road. That was a hard act to follow. I'm coming at this from two perspectives. One is that I've lived in Situate for twenty-five years now, and I, I have to say that I voted against the public safety complex at last year's meeting, and I still can't understand how a family could deed conservation land to the town and the town could then turn that into playing fields, schools, public safety complex, et cetera. I think what we're finding out now is that this conservation land possibly is not suitable for this building because it floods, and it floods every time it rains. I know that, and I'm wondering if that's part of the reason that the bid has come out higher than what you anticipated. So I'm opposed to this complex to begin with. Secondly, I now find out that there's a whole bunch of financial shenanigans going on involving us taking money out of our savings so that we can cover the fact that the bids came in higher, and I find that completely unacceptable, and that's just a way to get people to continue to accept it so that they won't have to spend more money on it. And I guess what I have to say is, both of those things are unacceptable to me. Thanks, bye-bye.
Gentlemen to my right.
Bruce Bent, eleven Walnut Avenue. I have a question for anyone on the podium up there. I believe that we voted sixteen million dollars initially for this project, and I've heard tonight, numbers of times, that it's down to thirteen million. Which is the proper number, first off?
To answer the question, Chairman Vignani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The thirteen million dollars is the portion of the sixteen that it's going to take to actually build the building. The rest of it's for architecture, design, and those components.
I got to go back to school. The second question I have is involving the twenty articles, or the twenty items that are listed on this page. Ten of them are very, very questionable as a reply to this particular article. For example, how does a special election for a U.S. Senator come out of this monies? How does a school bus come out of this monies in the safety complex? How does two emergency generators come out of this? And it goes on and on and on. One half of the items listed in here have absolutely nothing to do with the article that we have in the bid. Thank you very much.
Just by way of clarification on that, is, am I correct in understanding that those balances, elections, and so forth, you're closing out accounts to use the money on the project? Okay, thank you. Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood. Lady at the center, Mike.
Thank you. My name is Diane Duffin, thirteen Marshall Ave. in Situate. I'm not against the project, but my concern is the getting caught with these overestimate, the higher estimate. And my, my question is, what assurances can we have that we won't be back here every year confronting higher costs?
Chairman Vignani.
If I understand your question right, we have a bid to build this project at this number. In that number, there's contingencies built into it, so for this project, there's a firm bid for this to happen. As I mentioned a minute ago, if we do change the project and redesign it, then we could be back in the same situation that we are now, where we have to, you know, deal with whatever the fluctuations in the market are.
Yeah, go ahead.
So as I understand it, then they could not go over, if you get a contract now, we couldn't come back with higher estimates on anything. I mean, the construction costs couldn't go up. You'll be locked in.
Yeah, go ahead. Yes, the bid is a solid bid at the number that they proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen to my left.
Scott Greenbaum, 40 Damon Road. Just want to make a simple observation. If two years ago, when this article was first brought up, it had been 18 million dollars, with all the needs that we do need for a public safety building, if you would have voted for the 16, you would have voted for the 18. Cost estimating is a very difficult job. I have to do it professionally, and if I can get within plus or minus 25% of what a project ends up being after its bid at a preliminary stage, I feel very good. So if you consider that you were going to support this project at 18 million dollars, I mean, at 16.2 million dollars, you should really consider, well, we need it. We've gotten this far down the road, we have a building designed, it's ready to go on the ground, it'll be open in 18 months or so, and we will have a benefit from it for the next 50 years, then think, would you have supported 18 million dollars, or 17 and a half, whatever the total is right now, a year and a half ago when you were at town meeting? If not, then you weren't supporting a project of putting new public safety building up, a modern and concise unit, that will meet the needs of the neighborhood. This public safety building looks like, and is built to the standards that I see, a number of them throughout the state. So I hope that we can get this going, because I was here 14 years ago, I've lived here about 16, and those fire stations never got built, and we haven't done anything for our public safety to improve it in the building end. We have obviously bought some good equipment, and we need to put that equipment in a place so it will stay and be protected, and serve us for a long time, and fit in the buildings that it's going to. Thank you.
Lady to my right.
Hi, everyone. Lynn Maloney, 49 Border Street. I just wanted to make an observation. I have lived in this town for 33 years now, which I guess doesn't quite make me a townie yet, but we've all lived here and enjoyed living in Situate, we love Situate. I thought they'd have to carry me out fees first at the end of the time that I spent my time in Situate. And I'm quite concerned about what's happened to the expenses in this town. I used to come to town meetings and have people say, we have to curb the cost in this town, or my kids are never going to be able to live here. I feel like now I wonder whether I'm going to be able to live here. And we can all see the results of that in our town. You know, my mortgage is paid for, and I'm still worried. So I can't even imagine what it's like if you still have a mortgage and you live in this town. I have a water bill for three months, for the, my last water bill for the past three months was $700. There's, this is, we all want a public, public safety to be improved, we all want better response times, and you certainly can't argue with that. But just a note of caution about what we really want for our town, what we want our town to become. I don't want to live in Cohasset, I want to live in Situate. I'd like to see a diverse town with all sorts of people, with people being able to afford to live here, and I don't see that happening. I've also seen terrible things under my street, Border Street. People are dividing their land because they can't afford to pay taxes, they're putting houses on marginal lots, we're putting a building on a place that doesn't perk. I think we need a big, a big overview plan, and I think we all need to decide what we want, where we want to live in, whether we want to keep Situate in a town that has a similar character to what it has had, or whether we want to let that go, because our tax bills are getting terrible. And even if this doesn't come out of our tax bills, we have a town that goes underwater two, three times a year. I would certainly want to see that money saved for big emergencies, which we can all see coming in the future. Thank you.
Lady to my left.
I'm Andrea Hunt. I live at 66 Manlot Road. I'm also in a butter to this project. I am for a safety complex. I think our town desperately needs this, especially as we are growing. This particular project, on this particular land, I'm sorry, I cannot support. This is land that does not perk. This is land that cannot support a septic system. The septic system has to be put across the street on Manlot Road in a residential area that is already having septic issue problems. It's land that can't support a full cellar. It needs extra drainage. We are not going to be able to remove all of the silt and the soil, which is going to result in a large eight-to-10-foot berm around the building with drainage on either side, which means that hundreds and hundreds of trees are going to have to be removed as well. This land bequeathed to the town under the promise that it was not going to be built upon. I knew Catherine and Madeline Ellis personally, who lived there. I know the Bailey family. When the six acres was transferred out to the school committee, it was done in good faith, and with family speaking to the fact that Madeline and Catherine loved children, and decided that that six acres could then maybe be used for a school, with the rest of the property still staying natural, so that people could walk it, enjoy it, and use it as part of the town green belt. To have had it transferred back to the selectmen for this particular project, to me, was a direct insult to that family. Not that I disagree with the fact that it might have better response time, but that response time is going to do us no good if we cannot staff a full-time ambulance, and if we cannot take care of that building with three full bays, a 24-hour ambulance, and good heavens, give our firemen a contract. Here we are talking about borrowing all of our savings that are used for other emergencies and necessities in town, and yet we don't have firemen operating with a proper contract. And we don't even have staffing guaranteed for this complex that you're asking us to spend more money on to build. Somewhere, we have to go back and look at this project and do it correctly with the monies that we have. And the money that everybody is afraid of losing because of design and engineering costs, we're not losing that. We still have the design. Education costs money, and maybe in this particular sense, we have learned that this is not a proper project on the proper land. Let's go back and build a fire station and a police station that is going to work within our budget, and something that we can maintain and staff. Please, I do not support this article for those reasons. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a couple of remarks on what I've been listening to. We talk about budget, being budget efficient. I don't think there's anybody here that says we don't need a renovated and/or brand-new safety, public safety building. I think everybody here agrees to that. That's nice, common ground, so let's start there. I think you have to put your faith, to some degree, in the professionals that have worked, we've been talking about this for two and three years, you have experts here, architects that can speak to the drainage issue, the testing that was done. This is not a building that just came out of the Sears catalog, that we're going to go stick on a piece of land that we've absconded from conservation. There's been a lot of thought in this. You're at a critical point. If you read the back of this wonderful paper which was put out for everybody, back when we voted for this building in construction concept, we were all willing to pay that original estimate per annum, per, per average household. To look at Article 7, which is really what we're talking about right now, you'll still be paying 10% less, and you're going to have a somewhat reduced structure. If we go to Article 8, you'll have the full thing that we were sold back in April, and you'll still be paying less. Part of the monies that were given back in the earlier articles are a result of the savings that your professionals, that you should be trusting, gave to you, gave back to us. Yes, our money. Addressing over here, gentlemen, about the Capital Stabilization Fund, that's what it's for. Yes, we need to squirrel away money every year to capital stabilization, but that's, this is the prime example of what this fund is for, is when we get to a gap in something, rather than burden the taxpayer, implement some of the capital stabilization, actually use that money that's laying around. When we look at the other $158,000 that we're taking as surpluses that have been laying around in these accounts, some are very dusty, some are, some were involved when I was chairman of the Capital Planning Committee, some were involved by the previous chairman, now we're going back five years. So we're trying to use that money too. I think on this side of the aisle over here, they're being very responsible in what they're doing. Make no mistake, if we do vote this down, we've lost a million dollars, we've lost three years' worth of time. We haven't supported these people for what they believe professionally, they're the ones that, listen, if I'm having a heart attack on the West End, which is where I live, by the way, I don't want anybody thumping on my chest unless it's the guys with the blue and the red lights. Okay? They are the professionals, they know what they need, and I think they've been very judicious. I've sat in all the meetings. Your advisory committee meets every Thursday night to actually entertain and talk to these people. I don't see a lot of people at those meetings, so I don't know how informed everybody is. If it's just dollars, financial, this is a good deal. If it's efficiency and service, you have to trust these people, because that's what they do. I can't second-guess them. So I would ask you to reconsider and support this, and let's move forward. That's all. Thank you.
Gentlemen at the center, Mike.
Matt Brown, 122 Tilden Road in Situate. And that previous speaker is, we've heard many times before, trust the experts. Trust the people. You haven't gone to the meeting, so you don't know anything about it. Trust the experts. We tried to get a, I went to my iPad to try to get a warrant for this meeting, and I got it after some searching. Well, I got, I noticed right in the, on the homepage of the warrant, we were told about town, about high tides, and we were told about rain, but we weren't told about the warrant. I had to search and found the warrant, and in the warrant, I never could find any recommendations from the advisory board in the warrant. Now, I understand it was published in the newspaper, and there were a few published for people who came, but you had to be here early. And this is what bugs me about this whole thing. In business in Situate, politics in Situate has become cute. And you know, if you've come from Boston, you know what cute means, clever. We don't pass out enough warrants, we encourage only, what, 250, 300 people to come to these meetings. When I went to meetings, I've lived in town, by the way, 75 years, and I remember going to meetings about schools, and firemen, and policemen, in which we would fill this meeting, and would fill a meeting over at the junior high school. And now we have 250 people that will buy anything, because the experts has told us it's better for you. Well, you know something? I'm sick of listening to these experts. I don't think we're, I don't have the confidence in the people that are running the place, and that's why I've never voted against a school, and I've never voted against a fire race or a policeman's race, but I'm going to vote against this, because I do not trust this crowd. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Gentlemen to my right.
Pete Toppin, 26 Clapp Road. Usually I'm a teller, but I'm not a teller tonight, so I can say something. Basically, at this moment, we're supposed to be discussing Number 7. And Number 7 isn't costing you any more money, the money is being taken from other places. Now, the fact is, they're taking $11,000 from the GIS permitting thing that we're trying to do in the harbor, the Waterways Commission wasn't consulted about whether we were ready to surrender that project. It's just being taken as part of the $158,000. And Fire Chief Murphy may be willing to give up on his $45,000 fire engine. It's part of that $158,000. But the point still is, we're talking a 4.6% increase on the project to 16 million two. 4.6 of that is involved in getting this project put together. So I would encourage us to vote for Number 7, and then have a continuing discussion for Number 8.
Lady at the center, Mike.
Beverly Westerveld, 12 Habview Road. Is the bid for the, two questions. One, is the bid for the smaller of the buildings, or with the extra Sally Port, et cetera? And two, if someone up there could talk about the engineering problems that people have been mentioning, is the over cost in the bids, was that because of the engineering problems with the drainage, the sewage, and all of that stuff? If I could have answers to those questions?
Yeah, just go ahead, whoever can answer them, go ahead. The town administrator.
Thank you. So Article 7 is to build the base bid for the building that does not have a third Sally Port, and, I mean, a second Sally Port and a third bay. And I would like to ask the architect, Don Walter from Doran Whittier, to explain the questions you have about the septic and the soils earlier. I do want to clarify three points that were made earlier. We went out to bid in September, I mean, October, not September. We created the Capital Stabilization Fund three years ago, not 10 years ago, and the fire union went to arbitration. We have an arbitration award, the fire department is challenging that award right now, but we have an award, so that is tantamount to a contract. Thank you.
Mr. Walter, the architect who is also a town resident.
Thank you. In terms of the site development, yes, we, we did, when we did our detailed exploration, find out that we had some unsuitables up on top, silty soils that needed to be removed, and we had to bring in structural fill up to the underside of the, of the foundation and the parking lots. That's only part of the cost increase. A big part of the cost increase really has to do with the skyrocketing market in the 10-to-20 million dollar projects out here in the public. And essentially, what happened was, the fact that the market was moving so fast, the project couldn't keep up with something that was estimated a year ago, with 10% design and price and contingency, and additional 4% escalation cost built in there, we were seeing anywhere from 10% to 15% escalation over the, in the market over the last year. So those are the, really, the two primary factors in the escal, in the over, in the increased cost that we're talking about here tonight. Thank you.
Lady to my right.
My name is Elizabeth Sheridan, 8 Priscilla Ave. I've been walking in the Ellis Estate for 23 years, and I find it to be a place of serenity and peace, and you want to put something in there that I am totally against going in there. I spent the last three days of my life in front of the grocery store downtown, talking to people. The elderly cannot get here, and they, if they can, they don't want to spend four, five hours listening to all this. People don't have babysitters. I've listened to everything. Many, many people didn't even know about this. They had no idea about this. You have signs around this town that say "special election." You don't tell them what it's about. They're supposed to watch your TV show, or read it in the Mariner. Well, not everybody does that, and this place is stacked with firemen and policemen. The elderly is not here, they're not represented here. You disgust me.
Well, just what I want to do, ladies and gentlemen, spend my Monday evening spend my Monday evening for four hours or three hours to discuss something about your town. You know, folks, I came up here a year ago almost. I kind of went through historically all the buildings that had happened and how it kind of stopped over time. And frankly, there was a reason for it, probably, because you know what? The buildings were built. Didn't need to build anything more in the '70s. The '80s had the high interest rates. And then in the '90s, nothing got built in this town. And that's okay. We probably didn't need it. It went to the operating budget. Went to all the employees. And then we built a school Jenkins. The only capital project built in this town since 1978, which was a library, all funded by the federal government, not by you. Yes, your tax dollars, yes. But ultimately paid by the federal government through all these other people throughout the country. The last public building, aside from Jenkins, built in this town with your public funds was 1974, Headquarters. Since then, we've attempted to build two other buildings. Senior Center. Boy, have we heard a lot about the complaints about the Senior Center. And yet, 10 years ago, a little more than 10 years ago, it came up for a vote. It passed. 2007, it failed. We're trying to build it again. We're trying to deal with that issue. And it failed because people shot it down. Said it was too much. Same thing's happening here tonight. What was the other building we had? It was the fourth fire station. The fire station that was shut down in Minnet in the early 1990s. Fire station was supposed to go unhatedly. People got up here. I was here. People got up and said, "No, it should be over in the town forest." "No, it should be over here." Second guessing. The fire station failed and wasn't built. Now, if you live in Minnet, you live in the West End, second fire... This second, not second, this third fire station is going to be repositioned for a better position for health and safety. And yes, if that's a scheme, to have a public building for health and safety, I'm guilty of that. But let me tell you, I don't get up here, I don't go to our meetings in order to have a scheme. I'm not here doing shenanigans. I'm not here misrepresenting. Folks, we're trying to improve the town. Your town. And you know what? It costs money. Some gentleman came up earlier, and I forgot who it was, but asked a decent question. "Well, if we don't build this building, why don't we build the 8.5 million?" Well, first, the estimator, who gave us the estimate for the 16.2 a year ago, gave us the estimate for the 8.5 for the police and the fire. So that figure probably has gone up too, given the recent building craze. So what do you get? Let's not vote for this tonight. Let's shoot it down. It's going to be your prerogative. But if you do, you're going to go back to the police station. And I dare ask each and every one of you. I asked you a year ago, I'm asking you again. Have any one of you actually gone through the police station and taken a look at what your police station looks like? How it's out of code? How it's not accessible? How victims have to go through the building, paraded around, in order to have some privacy when they're being interviewed? How police officers don't even have a gate around the entryway? You guys see it when you go by the high school. You see them taking people out, bringing them in. Have you walked up and through to where they actually process you? It's a terrible ramp that's actually undersized. So yeah, keep your police officers in the same building. We'll try to improve it. But we're going to get fined because it's out of code. And that'll be a cost. Same with your fire station, as I said. We're trying to reposition it at a third bay, which actually I think is critical. As I said that a year ago. This building is the most important building to this town, aside from the library, aside from the middle school. But if you want to shoot it down, go right ahead. You're missing a moment in time. And as I said to you a year ago, you're going to kick that can down the road. And as much as people hate it because it's going to cost, well, guess what? Aside from the Jenkins, over a span of 40 years, we have not asked you to increase your taxes for a public building, a capital improvement. That's a huge tax savings for all the people who've lived here since the '60s, when that generation took it upon themselves in the late '50s into the '60s to do public projects.
30 seconds.
So the last thing I just want to point out is the land that we're taking. We're not taking it. It's your land. It's the town-owned land. And it has not a deed restriction. It's 20 acres that was given to the school to be built on. And now that restriction, it's not a conservation restriction. So we can put a building there that's going to be better access for all of us, both in the West End, North Minnet, even all around town. I ask you, like I did a year ago, I implore you, vote for this project. Don't miss this opportunity. Thank you.
Gentleman to my left.
My name is Bill Schmidt. I live at 33 Egypt Beach Road. And unlike the recent speakers that were just speaking, other than John, I do trust the people that are up here. We elected them. The right side of this building, of those tables, aren't even elected. They just volunteer their time. I volunteer my time on the conservation board. And I'm telling you, the hoops that the people had to jump through to get this built on this land, everything needed to be get done right. So contrary to some of the sentiment here, I think that these people work hard, most of them, at least on the right side, for free. They volunteer their time. They show up at the meetings. I go to selectmen's meetings. I ask the questions. This has happened. It's a bump in the road. Let's get over it, give the people what they need, and move on. Thank you.
Gentleman to my left.
Bob DiLorenzo, 26 Hickory Lane. I'm encouraged, I'm confused, and I'm disappointed. I'm encouraged to the points that were made earlier and to the gentleman who was at this mic, who so eloquently said that this estimating process is not exact. And that what we've seen, as judged by the professionals in the room, is deemed to be honest and accurate and spelled out in excruciating detail how that is going to be funded with no impact on the taxpayers. There was a comment made earlier about sneaky finances, or I can't remember the word. There is always more detail than we probably would care to see to the last penny as to how our tax money is being spent. That I'm encouraged about. I'm confused because I hear a lot of things about this project that I thought would have been very, very good and relevant comments back before we voted to do the project. Where it was being built, why it was being built, how could we do it more efficiently? There were endless public meetings. I attended a public meeting which Mr. Walter was there and Chief Stewart was there and Chief Murphy was there. And other than then, there was probably 10 citizens that cared enough to show up at the public meeting to find out what this project was all about. And they were all very, very direct in their responses and encouraging questions. And lastly, I'm disappointed, to the point being made about politics in Situate being cute. I don't know what the hell that means, cute. I sat up there for six years, two as chairman of the advisory committee, giving up our time as citizens, trying to understand what we were missing and hoping people would show up at the meeting to challenge us. And every Thursday night, there'd be nobody there except Norm Paley. God love him. These people, these people, we live here, we want what's right for the town. They're trying to do the right thing. And to call it politics being cute is despicable. Thank you.
I'd have a moment of silence for Norm, but our loss is Florida's gain. Lady at the center mic.
My name is Jacqueline Carr. I live at 147 Tilden Road. I'm one of those people that's been at all of these meetings and I've been involved in this project pretty intimately since the beginning. I'm new to town. And when I... When you new... When you buy a house, you don't realize sometimes the condition of the schools or the conditions of the buildings in the towns that you're buying. So we bought our house about five years, four or five years ago, and we discovered that there was all these things going on. So I decided to become a part of it and try to find out, A, what was going on, and B, I wanted to be a part of some of the changes. So I've personally volunteered my time, at least monthly, but you guys know it's been a lot more than that. These opinions are mine and not... I serve on the Public Building Commission, so I've been involved in these. I've been to at least 50 meetings on this particular thing alone. But these opinions are mine and not the Public Building Commission. One of the things that I learned on this project was that between the fire department and the police department, this town carries unmitigated liabilities because our buildings are not up to codes and they're not up to state standards. And these liabilities could eventually be incredibly costly to this town because of the fact that we haven't done anything about it. I think it speaks volumes about our professionals and the fact that nothing has happened and that our town is in the standing that it is today. I say the same thing about the budget because if it wasn't for the capital planning that has been going on for the past several years, we wouldn't be able to stand here today and at least take a look at what our options are without really digging into people's pockets. And I think that everybody should be commended for the pieces that they've played in this. Another thing that I've learned is that this building was not put together with just willy-nilly wishes of everybody. It was very well thought out. And it was done based on standards of both professions. And it was done with excruciating detail. And so when we got to the point where things like Sally ports and bays were being cut, I don't think, this is my opinion, but I think that anything more than this, and I think we would have been exactly where we are today, coming to the town, asking for more money because the $16 million building wasn't going to be enough. It wasn't going to do what the town needed to last another 50 to 75 years. So although I agree that the estimate project was flawed, and in fact, if you know anything about the building, a public building, there's a whole process that could be questioned in it, I think we would be exactly where we are today. Because what this building really needs is everything that's in there, plus the Sally port and the bay. And we are so fortunate to be at a place where it's only going to cost us an additional $9, which is still less than what we all agreed to pay at the last town meeting. So I really encourage everyone to consider what the long-term plans are for the town and what you hope to get out of these buildings.
Lady to my right.
Nancy Toppin, 26 Clapp Road. I move the question.
A motion to move the question is a motion to terminate debate. It requires a two-thirds vote for approval. If it receives a two-thirds vote, debate will terminate and we will proceed to the vote on the main question. If it fails to receive a two-thirds vote, debate will resume. All those in favor of moving the question and terminating debates signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
So voted and declared a two-thirds vote, the motion passes. We now move to a vote on the main question. No, I assume nobody wants me to reread the motion. So we'll try a voice vote, but I'd say tellers be ready. All those in favor of the motion made on Article VII signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
So voted and declared a two-thirds vote. If any seven people wish to challenge my determination, they may rise and we will take a counted vote. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. I see seven people. Tellers, please take your places. All right. If we could have silence in the room while we vote, I would appreciate it. Richard. When I call the vote, either yes or no, this is your voting card. When you hold it up, this is what the tellers will be counting. So just wait one moment while the tellers take their places. We all set? Kathy, we all set? All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your voting card. We all set? Okay. Right rear bleacher.
60, 6-0.
Right front bleacher.
26, 2-6.
Right rear floor.
47, 4-7.
Right center floor.
23.
Right front floor, including the advisory committee and school committee. Thank you. Left rear bleacher. 4-2. Left front bleacher. 7. Left rear floor.
1-8.
Thank you. Left center floor.
21, 2-1.
Left front floor includes the moderator... No, it doesn't. Clerk, selectman, and registrars.
22, 2-2.
All those opposed to the motion, please raise your voting cards. Give the count, okay? Okay, you ready? Right rear bleacher.
14.
1-4. Right front bleacher.
9.
Right rear floor.
8.
Right center floor.
10.
Right front floor, including the advisory committee and the school committee. Left rear bleacher. I'm sorry, what was that number? Thank you. Left rear floor.
2-5.
Left center floor.
5.
5. Left front floor includes clerk, selectman, and registrars.
0.
2. Thank you, Alison. Okay, you ready? By a vote of 287 in favor and 107 against, the motion passes. Article VIII. On the motion, Chairman Vignani.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $751,000 for the purpose of fully funding, add alternatives, one Sally port for $354,000 and two, third bay for $397,000 as set out in the general bid contract documents and all costs incidental thereto associated with the proposed new public safety complex pursuant to Article I of the December 3, 2000... the proposed new public safety complex pursuant to Article I of the December 3, 2014 special town meeting warrant. And to fund such appropriation, authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow $751,000 and that such amounts required to pay the principal of and interest on the borrowing of this authorization by this vote be exempt from the limitation of total taxes imposed by the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 1/2 so-called.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, Chairman Vignani.
Thank you very much. Based on the previous article, we're here discussing this one. And this is an obvious, this is an article or a motion to add those two functional components back to this building, which is the Sally port and the third bay. I repeat that the building is intended to meet the needs moving forward for the next 50 years and that these two components are essential as deemed by both the chiefs and the design team. I'd like to share one comment that was made to me during this whole process and somebody mentioned it earlier. We were told that we will never be able to get this, these components at this price ever again, that the $750,000 will only go up. And it only makes sense because in order to build these two things, after the project is built, you're going to have to demolish new building and then build a renovation on top of it. And of course, you won't get any economies of scale of building a 16 or 18 million dollar project as opposed to a million dollar project. So now we come to the financing part. And if any of you watched the Board of Selectmen's meeting, you saw that it took us many times to go back and forth to figure out how to fund this project. And there really were three components that we discussed the most. One was we wanted to give the town the opportunity to have this building with most of its functional capacity with no additional tax dollars. And thanks to all of you here, or most of you here, or two-thirds of you here, we got that passed tonight. The second part of the project goes on to some of the discussions that have gone on earlier. When we came before you back in December, we told you the project was going to cost $149 for the average home in Situate. Due to our financial controls and our strong financial position, we were able to save $12 per person or $12 a year due to the interest rates we were able to gather. Now with this project, if we do pass this as an override, it's going to add an additional $8 to $9 to that override number, but still be a couple of dollars less than what we thought that it would cost initially and what actually passed at town meeting and at the ballot. You know, the third problem, the third consideration that we had when discussing this project was how else can we fund this? Now, we could have funded this just by saying, let's keep it in the capital plan and go through the annual process and just use funds from there. And given the fact that we may have to dip into those in Article VII, we thought that that was probably a little bit too cumbersome on the capital plans because the town is going to continue to have needs. There's going to continue to be things that need to be purchased and refurbished and repaired. And to add this to that was just more than we wanted to do. So we decided to put this before you and give you the option to add these two features as an increase to the override that was already passed. Just as note, a technical note, that the state allows us to take this override and pass it tonight and not have to go back to the ballot again. We have a letter from the state confirming this and they, there's, excuse me? And the reason for this is because it's still in the scope of the original project that was passed. So to recap, there's these two components that we feel is necessary for the long-term success of this project. We feel we should take advantage of the lower cost now because we're never going to get it at this price again. And we think that because it's going to be less than what everybody thought it was going to be initially, that that's compelling to do it this way. The selectmen voted in favor of this motion.
From the advisory committee, Mark Sandum.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Welcome everyone this evening. First off, I'd like to say thank you for the majority of the group who agreed, the majority to pass Article VII. I think that was the correct approach to take. We've been debating this thing for well over an hour, Article VII, and much of what we're covering here in Article VIII just kind of dovetails off Article VII. And Tony covered much of the items here and what we're about to vote on here in Article VIII. So it's been debated amongst the advisory committee and the majority of the committee believes that, you know, we've come this far in the process to build a public safety committee that meets all of the needs that we've heard and discussed tonight. So why are we coming this far and then not building something that we all know and want The majority of the committee here says, or believes that we want to build that public safety committee that meets those needs. Yes, there was a dissenting vote amongst the committee that went ahead with VII but did not agree with VIII and adopt Article VIII simply because of the additional hardship that the additional $8 to $9 will be adding to the taxpayers and to the residents. So the advisory committee recommended approval of this article and motion. It was a majority vote, six to one in favor. And thank you for your support.
From the capital planning committee, Chris Karsh.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. The capital planning committee also voted unanimously for this article for the reasons outlined by Selectman Vignani. Now is the time to do it.
Discussion from the floor. Lady to my left.
Andrea Hunt, 66 Manlot Road. You heard me state before that I was not for Article VII. I was not for Article VII for the reasons that I stated. I am for a public safety center. As a result, since the town has voted for this to go forth, I am definitely urging all of you to go forth with the entire building and that we vote yes on Article VIII because we need three fire ports or three bays and we definitely need our two Sally ports. If we're going to do it, do it all the way and do it right. I urge you all.
Lady to my left.
Anne Burbine, 10 Pennycrest Road. I will reiterate what Andrea Hunt just said. We need to vote the rest of the money. We need to do this correctly. We are a town in the umpteen years that I have lived here. If we could have something for a dollar, we settle for 65 cents and then we spend $1.25 trying to fix it. And we look back at, as Mr. Danahy pointed out, the last public building we had was built in 1972 or '74 when I moved to town, the central fire station, and we never finished it. It was supposed to be bricked. Instead, they painted it red. Now, ladies and gentlemen, we can do way better than that. We have voted this, we need it, and let's do it correctly the first time.
Gentlemen at the center, Mike.
Matt Brown, 122 Tilden Road. I recently accused the leadership of the town of being cute and I think we just heard another example of it. We hear that it's $9 for average taxpayer. The way I was brought up in a town meeting is you say, how much money is it going to cost per thousand evaluation? Gentlemen, that's the way you're supposed to talk about taxes, not per average. I don't know what the average person in Situate pays, but I could understand it if you said per thousand. And that's the cuteness that I don't like. And I see it everywhere I look. We've got 400 people tonight that are voting on a big deal. And now you've got to ask yourself the question, are they people staying home because they're not interested or because they don't have any confidence in the leadership? You've got to ask that question. Don't be cute.
Gentlemen to my right.
Ken Conway, 15 Eagles Nest Road. I'd like everybody to remember the number 22. If 22 more people were here, because I hear all this, the town, the entire community wants it, the majority of the community wants this, we have no idea if that's true or not. 22 people could have changed the vote tonight. And I think the other thing that's very important is all that we said, we're taking it out of one fund and putting it in another, so it's not going to increase your taxes. It will, trust me, because that money has to be replaced. And when that gets replaced, that's going to be another override that you and I are going to pay for. And I go to, let me address the last gentleman that just spoke about whether it's $127 or $9 or whatever. My family and I are extremely fortunate to live in Situate. We used to live in Hingham. We came to Situate because we thought the people were a lot nicer, and they are. But I don't think that we're smart enough because what I know is when we built the house that I live in right now, up on the cliff overlooking the ocean, we're extremely lucky to be living there, my taxes for the four properties that we own were about $50,000 a year. I'm the fifth largest taxpayer in the town. Today, 10 years later, those taxes were, just because I paid the bill this morning, $65,000. So in 10 years, my taxes went up $15,000. Now fortunately for me, I can afford it. I know there's a lot of people in town that can't afford that percentage increase. I'm sure they can't. One lady spoke about it earlier. We haven't heard any commitments, or I haven't heard any commitments, about how the operating budgets for the new library, for the new police and fire station, for the new senior center, for every, the new town hall that we're going to hear about soon too, where's that money going to come from? It's not just the capital money that we have to allocate. You have to allocate the money to do it. And guess what? When we built Jenkins, we kept that building empty for a year because we couldn't afford the money to run it. And that's the situation we're putting ourselves in. We can build a building for the money that we've allocated. We can. It's all brick and mortar. You can build a building that costs you $10 million, $50 million, and the utility of it is very, very similar. So we can get the safety. I think we can get the safety that we want. We want the building, but we don't have to spend all that money. We're just being hoodwinked. And I think when somebody says, trust the experts, well, first of all, you don't know whose expert here is sitting in the audience telling you some of these things. I don't know your expertise, so I won't prejudge you. But I know there's a lot of experts out here that know a lot of things and when they vote that they want or don't want to do something, I listen to them. And I wish there were 22 more people here tonight. So I'm one more step close to running for selectmen.
I'll put you on the list. Let's see. Oh, he left. Gentlemen at the center, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Scott, 51 Elm Street. I speak in favor of Article VIII and just a quick response to the previous speaker. If there were 22 more people here against this article, there'd be 122 more people here for it. He said that we don't know where everybody stands on this. We spent a good year promoting the school project and the public safety project in this town. We came to this town meeting, voted in favor of both projects, then went to a special election to vote for an override on this project, and it passed. So the town has spoken on these issues despite some comments we've heard from others today that perhaps we didn't speak on this issue. I also like to recognize the incredible integrity of Mrs. Hunt, who spoke against Article VII, but then had what I consider to be the good sense to stand up and support the building as approved by the voters last January. This is a project that was not put together willy-nilly. There were a lot of professionals who put their time and effort into this. And those of us who come to town meetings like this on occasion, don't do this day in and day out like the others do. And there's been a lot of denigration of those officials, both public employees and public servants who volunteered time to the town, that I think deserve a lot more credit than they've been receiving in what I hope is a vocal minority. I know the vote in January was close. It was only a couple of hundred votes that supported these projects, but that is democracy. The project passed and I speak in favor of Article VIII. I suggest that it's a good investment at this time. The finance director did a great job borrowing money. It's costing us less money to borrow for this project and therefore the cost to us is actually less than it was when this project was initially proposed to us. We put in a very conservative estimate as to what the average cost would be and it turns out that we're doing a little bit better than we thought. So I suggest that the town meeting pass this article.
Gentlemen to my left.
Hi, Mark Matthews, 301 Clap Road. I was here for the town meeting where we voted for this article initially and this room was packed. And it passed unanimously, pretty much. The yays were pretty loud. So I'm here hearing all these articles come forth saying, oh my God, oh, that's coming in cheaper than what we proposed. And we're still going to pay less than what we voted for. So to me, this is a no-brainer.
Town administrator.
I believe there was a question asked of what this would add to the tax rate. It's two cents.
Gentlemen to my right.
With that, I move the question.
Question's been moved. A motion to move the question is a motion to terminate debate. It requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
So voted and declared a two-thirds vote. We now move to the main motion. Does anyone want it read back to them?
No.
No, okay. Sounds like you're all set to vote. I'll try a voice vote and the tellers can get on their bicycles and be ready. All those in favor of the motion on Article VIII signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
So voted and declared a two-thirds vote. If any seven people wish to turn to question my determination, they may rise now. I don't see seven people. That's a two-thirds vote. I just want to thank all of you for the, you know, I don't vote on these things, but I listen to you. I want to thank you for the very enjoyable debate. Yeah, look, it gets heated and pointed at times, but the passion that's shown, I think, is a credit to you all. Thank you. Article IX. On the motion, selectmen, oh, two. Hold on, Marty. If those of you who are leaving or voting with your feet, however you want to phrase it, if you could leave quietly, please do so so the rest of us who are doing the town's business. Go ahead, Marty.
First, I want to thank you for your support on Article VII and Article VIII. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from retained earnings in the Water Enterprise Fund to the Water Stabilization Fund, the sum of $250,000 for the purpose of apportioning water payments for repair and improvement of the town's water system infrastructure pursuant to Article IX of the April 13, 2015 warrant.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, selectmen, oh, two.
This money gets captured in the stabilization fund and those dollars will go to pay off future debt.
Guess that covers it. Mr. Hydeman from the advisory committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So just briefly, the selectmen currently, I believe, said earlier, spoke about the bond that is being issued for this. Was issued in June 2015 for $4.4 million. The advisory committee recommended approval of this article unanimously, seven to zero.
All right, discussion from the floor. There being no one at the mics, stabilization involves two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm, was George up there before I called the vote? All right. A gentleman at the center, Mike. My apologies. My apologies.
George Kelly, 450 Country Way. In the water funding and everything that's going on, they have just done about halfway of Branch Street. Now, if they don't complete halfway, the other half, then we're going to have disruption for over two years. That is not good planning, because they were doing Branch Street, and now they've hopped into Lawson Road. This is disgraceful if they don't complete that section of water pipe going down to Curtis Street. I really, really feel that we're not being treated properly to have a street that then will be ending up over two years of repairs. It's not right for the neighborhood.
The Public Works Director.
Good evening. I'd gladly invite you in to come in and take a look at the plans, but on Branch Street and Country Way, there are some pipes that were put in in the '50s or '60s that are in decent condition. We're only going for everything pre-1935.
There being no one else at the mics, approval requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Article 10, on the motion, selectman O'Toole.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate $1,153,000 from the Water Enterprise retained earnings to pay costs of the water pipe replacement project approved by the town under Article 11 of the warrant at the town meeting held on November 4, 2013, which funds shall reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed but not yet issued by the town for that project by a like amount.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion, selectman O'Toole.
We've completed 15 miles of the water replacement project, and the approximate cost has been about $940,000 per mile. When the town received the bond issuance from Phase 1 and 2, we received a cash premium in the amount of $1,153,000. This would be used to pay down the remaining $8 million and in turn, reduce further interest costs to the taxpayers.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As selectman O'Toole mentioned, we were looking to move, allocate $1.153 million of the cash premium received from the town's June bond issuance to allocate to Phase 3, thereby reducing the future interest costs to all ratepayers in town. Advisory unanimously approved this article, seven to zero. Thank you.
Discussion from the floor. No. There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Article 11, selectman O'Toole.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the treasurer to borrow with the approval of the board's selectmen pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44 or any other applicable law, $1,500,000 in the form of a low-interest loan from the Commonwealth's Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs Dam and Seawall Loan Fund to fund the replacement of a portion of the seawall at Oceanside Drive.
It's been moved, seconded, discussion, Mr. O'Toole.
Our seawalls and forshore protection protect our infrastructure, which affects everybody in the town of Situate. Many are in poor condition, and we realize that with our limited resources, we cannot go it alone. In July of 2015, the town submitted a grant application for the replacement of a section of seawall on Oceanside Drive. And in October, the town was notified that we had an award. Shortly after that, Governor Baker, Lieutenant Governor Polito, came to Situate, and we got a $1.5 million grant. And then we have an offer of a $1.5 million low-interest loan. And that's what we are asking for your approval on today.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Anthony Antonello.
Hi, good evening. This is a very good project. The town made an application for a grant, and we received a $1.5 million grant and a $1.4 million lower-interest loan. And this project is to repair deteriorated seawall along Oceanside Drive, a very good project. And I might add, I think congratulations are in order to Nancy Finance Director and Kevin Cafferty, DPW Director, for a great job.
Discussion from the floor. Gentleman to my right.
Alan Greenberg, 122 Old Oak and Bucket Road. I recognize the importance of our continuing Band-Aids applied to the seawalls. There was discussion a couple of years ago and last year of the fact that we were in the process of developing a long-term plan to deal with what apparently will be significant ocean level rises, and that is not going to be dealt with merely by adding feet to our seawalls. What stage is that plan in at this time?
Public Works Director to answer the question.
Alan, as you're aware, the town has started a new coastal coalition that is looking at all aspects of seawalls. We do have a long-term plan and a short-term plan. A lot of it depends on how it's funded. We have a section that we presented to the selectmen back about six or eight months ago for the different sections of Oceanside Drive that we're going to be making repairs to, and also the beach nourishment defects that we're going to be doing off Glades Road as a soft issue without seawalls, without building up seawalls to help protect the coast. I hope that answers your question, and I'd invite you into our office anytime to speak with me and Nancy Durfee, and we'll show you what we have.
Yeah, it doesn't really answer my question, but I will stop by. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to also call up Nancy Durfee, if she can tell a little bit more about our long-term plan.
Ms. Durfee to answer the question.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Durfee. I'm the Coastal Resource Officer for the town of Situate, and we did just recently receive a grant from CZM that will allow us the opportunity to assess the entire coastline in a way that we haven't as of yet. We'll be using scientific studies similar to what happened in the North Beach Project, doing lateral drift and finding where the sand is actually drifting to, the bentic and the slope of the bentic area, as well as the sand sampling size. And then we're going to take that information and bring it to an engineer, and the engineer will help us decide what types of methods we could use to protect the coastline. They're also going to give us the cost associated with those types of measures, and then there'll be a prioritization process that will take place, where you will all be invited to participate, as well as others that would be helpful for making those answers possible. We have just received the proposals. We'll be making the decision shortly as to who we will award the contract to, and that will help award us the types of prioritization of projects along the coastline, as well as what Kevin has already just mentioned. There is a lot of activity taking place, and we've been working tirelessly to make sure that the areas of most importance to the town are taken care of. I hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Gentleman to my left.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Joe Burke. I live at 75 Lighthouse Road, right in the middle of all that. But what I'd like to call your attention to is reread Article 11. I want to thank the selectmen, the town of Situate, the state of Massachusetts, all for backing us on the need for this long-awaited beginning or continuation of some repair work. Eighty years ago was the last time these seawalls were replaced and rebuilt. Eighty years. And it says in here, much like you said, selectman, about the building that we need to put up for the town offices, et cetera, we need to cover, begin covering the next 50 years. Okay? And I want to say this. I lived down there. I've lived down there for 17 years. I love it. But it isn't about me and the rest of Situate that live there. It's, as you so well said, the complete infrastructure of this downtown area needs to be protected. And I will also tell you that we had a big storm last year. And we've had, we're going to have more storms. As far as global change, as far as rising seas, I don't know. Heck, our meteorologists can't forecast two days in advance. But I will tell you this. Last year, during that storm, after living there 17 years, I saw water coming in the back of my house for the first time. I later learned there had been two earlier breaches in the seawall. The water came in the back. It didn't come out of the harbor. It isn't rising seas. It was the deteriorating seawall. We needed, we've needed it probably for 40 of the last 80 years. We need it now. But like the rest of the plans you're talking about here, we need it to begin building for the next 50 years to protect this incredibly beautiful town from seas that want to get to us whether we want them to or not. And I don't want to watch water coming in my house again unless it's a Force 5 hurricane, eh, in which case, what can I say? Thank you.
Lady at the center, Mike.
Martha Cook, Acorn Street. It says low-interest loan. Could you be a little more specific and describe for us what the interest rate will be and the length of time, what terms we could expect?
There being no one else at the mics, except the gentleman to the right. Go ahead. I call the question. Okay. All those in favor of the motion on Article 11 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. It required a two-thirds vote, so it passes. Article 12. Selectman Harris on the motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town rescind the sum of $314,150 from a community preservation appropriation for construction of a girls' softball field pursuant to Article 15, Item 12 of the 2009 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, an additional $104,000 authorized under Article 16, Item 16 of the April 9, 2012 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, also for the construction of this field.
It's been moved, seconded, discussion, selectman Harris.
As we know at this time, the plan we approved, as well as the funds we approved at previous town meetings, to build a girls' softball field at this specific site, at this specific site are on hold. This is simply just returning those funds back to the CPC.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Westward.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As Sean said, basically, they got the money. They can't build it there because the site's no longer viable, so we just got to give it back to CPC, and they're welcome to come back to with another project down the road. Advisory Committee votes 7-0 in approval of this article.
Okay, discussion from the floor. There being no one, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Article 13, on the motion, selectman Harris.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town rescind the balance of the loan authorized and an unused pursuant to the following article and town meeting approval. The item was a bucket truck for the DPW. The original amount was $130,000, and the unused balance is $60,000.
It's been moved, seconded, discussion, selectman Harris.
As it's written in the Advisory Committee booklet, we purchased a used bucket truck rather than a new one.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To reiterate, selectman Harris's comments, in essence, in 2010, we bought a used bucket truck for the DPW at a price of $70,000 versus the $130,000 that was originally appropriated, leaving a surplus of 60,000 that would now be rescinded back. Advisory recommends unanimous support of this article, 7-0. Thank you.
Discussion from the floor. There being no one at the mics, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Article 14, on the motion, selectman Harris.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town amend the general bylaws of the town, Section 20440, by deleting the words "Community Preservation Committee" in line 7.
It's been moved, seconded by selectman Danny. Discussion, selectman Harris.
The CPC is, it's written in our bylaws in two different ways. First, under an annual appointment. Secondly, we'll see three years, overlapping terms. The board has always appointed and reappointed CPC individuals under the annual appointment process. I can see why the Advisory Committee has voted the way they did. They feel that people need to get their feet wet. But it doesn't mean that this board is not going to reappoint an individual back if he or she re-appeals. I for one feel a three-year term might discourage some people from getting on this committee.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Westward.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Basically, the Advisory Committee voted against this. We feel like by the time you get up in your first year and get running and you know what the hell's going on, you could be off. We felt like a staggered three years, so you always get some new people. Some people will roll over. But same thing like most of the other boards in town. We felt also that way, you can't stack the deck. Some people are coming on, some people are leaving. That way, you get a good representation. The Advisory Committee recommended 0 to 7 against this article.
Discussion from the floor. Gentleman to my left.
Mark Fenton, 25 Crescent Ave. I'd like to urge the town meeting to vote, a strong urge against this article. My concern is this, having served on community preservation previously and looked at the work they've done, this is a board that allocates as much as $1,500,000 a year. This is not an insignificant amount of money. And it takes some time to understand the fairly Byzantine rules that the state applies, because remember, there's about a half of this is matching money from the state. So you have to first understand those rules. Then you have to understand some kind of continuous plan. The very premise of community preservation is that we're spending it on open space, recreation, on historic preservation, and affordable housing. And we've done in particular a very poor job on that third category. We've got a lot of money built up in this fund toward affordable housing. We've not been able to allocate it very effectively, and I would submit in part, that's because we haven't really developed a plan with some continuity. I think as the advisory board recommends, members that have multi-year staggered terms, allow that kind of continuity built up, a philosophy to be created on the part of the committee, and I think we're in need of that on this. So I'd strongly urge town meeting to support the three-year terms, staggered terms, and thereby vote against this article. So it's a vote against if you believe in the three-year terms.
Gentleman at the center, Mike.
Matt Brown, 122 Tilden Road. I agree with the previous speaker. I think this is another example of being cute. Here's the problem. We have a lot of money in that, in that fund, and they're supposed to be used for three items: historical preservation, recreation, and low and moderate income housing. And as the previous speaker pointed out, we've done very well in the very first two additions, but not in the last one. And also, that money is very tempting. It's very tempting to be cute and call a sidewalk a historic trail when it isn't. It's a sidewalk. It's very tempting to call a football field a recreation project. I don't trust the present administration to be honest with the community preservation funds. I would like to have three-year terms so that the selectmen cannot pack it and be
Let's see, lady to the right, and a gentleman to my left.
Scott Greenbaum, 40, Damon Road. I'm actually a little confused by the wording here. I'm actually a little confused by the wording here. Are we voting that all members will be appointed for three-year terms and that the board will be rotated out so that they're not all changed all at once? Or are we voting that now the selectmen will be selecting the whole, whole group every year to replace the group that was there the year before? Because right now, I'm confused. That's the question.
We're not gonna, my proposal is not to change it at all. We've been doing this for thirteen years, this way. One-year terms. It's not, like I said, I want to repeat it. If people reapply, it's not like we don't reappoint these people. Many times, we don't have enough people to apply.
So it will be a one-year term if this is voted yes?
That's correct.
All right. And currently, the members have a three-year term?
Go ahead.
And that's the way it's been, once again. That's the way it's been for thirteen years. One-year terms. There is a discrepancy in the bylaw, like I said, you know, in my, in my comments. In one spot, it says it's an annual appointment. And then just down a little bit further, it said it's a three-year appointment. So that's what I'm trying to correct here. And I suggest a one-year appointment like it's been for the last twelve or thirteen years. And I said I can see why they'd say, I can see why they voted the way they did. To me, I don't think it's broken. And Mr. Brown, I've been called a lot of things. When I had you in math, you never said I was cute, so I thought you could trust me up here, you know?
The town administrator wished to expand on the answer.
All right.
Matt never called me cute.
Okay, I'll try and clarify. So there's two places in the bylaw. One says that the Community Preservation Committee is appointed for one year, and right below it, it says its members are appointed for three years. The CPC statute specifies the, who should be on the CPC. And those are three-year terms, but there's also four at-large positions. So there's someone from conservation, there's someone from recreation, there's someone from the Historical Commission. Those are three-year terms. Those will not change. The Board of Selectmen has four at-large appointments. For the inception of the CPA, they have been doing that on a one-year basis. So what we're trying to suggest here, the Warren article, is delete the CPC appointment for three years and continue with the public practice for the board's four at-large appointments only for one year.
You still have the floor.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator. Is there any way we can clarify the wording of this so that we know what we're moving on it? Because I think I understand what, but I'm still confused. And I don't, I don't really support the idea that four or seven people get rotated out every year, that there should be some memory in the thing. Can't be rotated out every year. And so I think at this point, with the unclarity of this, I couldn't support it because it's not clear. And maybe you can make some recommendations of how we clear it up.
Gentleman to my right.
Steve Yorkland, 15, Capdaniel Litchfield. I served on the CPC, and I was a member at large. And I just want to agree that when you get on that board, you really need a year to figure out what's going on. So if there's a discrepancy in the bylaw, I would try to find a way to change it so that members are on for three years. If they have something personal that comes up and they have to get off, I think the town can find another member to get back on that board. But you can't do it and turn them over in one year. It's, like they say, it's a lot of money to spend. It's taxpayers' money, and you want people that have been there for a while. So I agree with the advisory committee on this one. Thank you.
Lady to my left.
Karen Connolly, 30, Roundtree Lane. I'm the current chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I would like to point out that if people think people are being cute, I take umbrage to that. Nobody's being cute. And in fact, the original bylaw that the town adopted when we adopted the Community Preservation Act is, to my way of thinking, what the town adopted at the time. And what it adopted was five members appointed by their boards, and then four members appointed by the selectmen. I will tell you right now, there is no stacking. And this is a very independent committee, and they're very cognizant in fact that it is a lot of money that we are overseeing on your behalf. But at the end of the day, town meeting has to vote. We only recommend, you vote. So I'm neutral on the question. I was, I've been, I was on the advisory board for two terms. It's a lot to ask people to sign up for a three-year term, and a lot of people back off because they think, I don't want to get stuck for three years. And most people who do do it for three years, they're willing to invest their time on your behalf and spend nights. I spent nights in the library with the advisory committee. I spend every Monday night now, every, once a month, with the Community Preservation Committee, and countless hours, countless hours, over and above the meetings. So as far as I'm concerned, I don't think the Board of Selectmen is trying to stack this committee. They've not succeeded if they've tried. And the fact is, is that it doesn't really matter to me personally whether it's a one-year term or a three-year term. Thank you.
Gentleman to my right.
David Ball, 44, Rebecca Road. I'm president of the Situate Historical Society, so I'm fairly familiar with the benefits of the CPC program that the state has passed and the town has adopted. I'm not comfortable at all with changing this from three years to one year. In my opinion, it takes a lot of institutional memory to really be an effective member of that committee. The rules are complex. They're dealing with a lot of money. I agree with some of the previous speakers that I think this needs a lot more thought, and my recommendation would be to indefinitely postpone it.
Gentleman to my right.
I think a three-year timeframe on almost any commission is a requirement. If you're not willing to put that much time in, and if the committee that appoints you isn't, has that much trust in you, you're not going to actually become an active, good member for at least a year. I can, I can tell you one case, though, where a selectman tried to remove someone from a commission because there was a decision made in a conservation meeting that went against that guy's house. And I'm not going to get into who it is, but I can tell you, they tried to do it, it wasn't allowed. And I'm not saying they tried. One person tried to do it. The person whose view was going to be affected. So a one-year term is just too easy to change.
Gentleman to my right.
Rich Travers, 57, Old Oak and Bucket Road in Situate. I understand what a yes vote would mean. I'm not clear on what a no vote would mean on this article. I wonder if someone could explain the impact on the advisory boards if we vote this no tonight.
I'm sorry.
A yes vote keeps it the same. A no vote changes to three years. Correct?
It's the other way around, I think.
All right. I'm sorry. I've been doing it too long. A no vote means nothing changes.
My understanding is, Mr. Moderator, if I could, my understanding is, right now we have a conflict. We've been, there's been a, an interpretation on the at-large for one year. So that, is that the outcome of a no vote?
Do you want to speak to it? Mike, do you want to?
I think you're asking, a no vote basically does nothing. It will be both, in the charter, both ways still. We can interpret it both ways. So actually, nothing happens if you vote no. It's still in there as three years and one years, the way you look at it. So it would just be, go on as normal.
Mr. Brown, for the second time.
Moderator, in order to clear up this question, first, the town administrator was exactly right in her interpretation of the law. It's, it can be read both ways. I suggest to amend this motion, this article, to say that the selectmen's nominees to the CPC committee be that of three years only. Is there a second?
All right.
Pete Tomlin, 26, Clapp Road. I'd like to second Matt's motion.
Thank you. So we have a motion, and, and, Mr. Brown, could you repeat the motion?
Right now, the law is, what's the word? Dubious or?
Ambiguous.
It's hard to understand. It says both things. It says one, some nominees are one year, some nominees are three. So let's make it all the same. I move that the selectmen's nominees to the CPC committee are of a three-year term.
All right. Now I'm going to ask a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
From the proponents. And who wants to speak for the proponents on this? Do you want to take a shot? All right. So, Mr. Danny, because I have to determine whether this motion is within the scope of the article.
I think it's out of order, but I'll let you.
So, well, that, that's my calls, but you're going to help me make it. If we vote no, what is the term for the selectmen's appointees?
As it was, and as it has been, which is one year, if, if... There is an ambiguity in the bylaws. There are two bylaws. One suggests three, one suggests one. And the one that we've been operating under since the promulgation of CPC and nominating people to the CPC has been based on twenty-six hundred, and I think it's, or I think it's fifty. I don't have the actual one. But what it says is that all members shall serve a one-year term. So that's what we've been dealing with, and there's an ambiguity between two sections. And we said, if the one says one-year term, then why not fix the bylaw to comport with it? Now you guys want to change it because we're being too cute. And so therefore, now, Mike, we're going to go back to three. So the board is against it because we've been operating that way. It's the way it's been going on since the institution of the CPC.
Okay, well, John, thank you, or Selectman Danny. Thank you. I think I'm ready to make a ruling on this. I believe that there is some confusion on the part of the meeting as to what the results of this vote would be. The section that is being sought to be amended here differs from the one that would have to be amended to carry out the purpose of your amendment. And while I understand what you're trying to accomplish with the amendment, because there is a different section, I believe that your amendment would be with, would be outside of the scope of the article.
Then it seems to me that we ought to reject the article and then propose a new amendment.
Well, that, that serves a rhetorical point, which I won't address, but I'll leave it to the members of the meeting to decide whether they're persuaded by that. Lady to my left.
I'm Alma Morrison of 22 Tickner Court, and I suggest, since there's such confusion about it, that we postpone the article to another town meeting when it can be clarified.
Ms. Morrison, one of the proponent has approached me with a request that he be allowed to indefinitely postpone the article. I will treat that as an amendment. It's seconded. We have to amend the main motion to do that. All those in favor of amending the main motion to indefinitely postpone this article, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. The motion as now amended is to indefinitely postpone the article. All those in favor of indefinitely postponing this article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 14 is indefinitely postponed, and I'm sure we'll see it at a future meeting. Article 15, Selectman Danny on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town amend the general bylaws of the town, section 2560, by changing the two appearances of the word, quote, "society," end quote, to the word, quote, "commission," end quote, in the second sentence.
It's been moved, seconded by Selectman Harris. Discussion, Mr. Danny.
Mr. Moderator, I'm going to defer to the advisory board member who's written this great booklet, give him an opportunity to explain. Thank you.
Mr. Westward from the advisory committee.
Thank you. Hopefully, this one's a little bit easier. In the, in the, the general bylaws, basically twice it says society, they want to change it to the word commission. I don't, we didn't, the advisory board had no issue with that. We voted seven oh in favor of it. Again, just trying to make everything clear so everybody in the bylaws knows what's going on.
Discussion from the floor, the gentleman to my right.
Hi, my name is Doug Smith. I live at 691 Country Way, and I also serve as chairman of the Situate Historical Commission. I'd like to make a motion to indefinitely postpone Article 15.
There's an amendment on the floor to indefinitely postpone. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, sir.
The, when the Historical Commission was formed, there was memorandums of agreement with the Historical Society that we wanted to work in a very cooperative nature in moving things forward, anything historic in the town. And we worked very cooperatively with the Society as we do appointments to the CPC. And when this article came forward, I was first aware of it, actually, today. And as chairman of the commission, I had hoped that somebody could have at least had the courtesy to reach out to the commission or to reach out to the Society, Mr. Ball, to talk about this amendment. Although it appears benign on the surface, I think it would have been, whoever was sponsoring the article should have at least had the courtesy to come forward in front of the commission or the Historical Society to talk about it, instead of, you know, reading about it in the newspaper. And I'd like to go back to those memorandums of understanding that we have with the Society to be certain that we are in harmony in how we do those appointments. So I would like to indefinitely postpone this article if we have a second.
Now, don't vote yet. Further discussion on the amendment. Town council.
James Toomey, Town Council. The board has asked me to speak on this. The reason for this change is, is that the statute, the Community Preservation Statute, which is chapter 44B, specifically requires that the Historical Commission be included amongst the mandatory representatives of the town in making up the CPA. So this is a technical legal requirement, and that, that is the.
No, okay. Go ahead.
So what I'm saying is that when the CPC Act was created in Situate, at the time, all there was was a society and not a commission. So that's why the language said society at the time and not commission. Again, I just would like to revisit the memorandum of understanding that was signed with the Board of Selectmen, with the Historical Commission, and with the Historical Society. One of those pieces of that memorandum of understanding was the appointment to the CPC. We just haven't had the time to have that discussion.
Okay. Further discussion on the amendment. Mr. Brown, are you heading to the mic?
Just a point.
Gentleman at the right mic.
Hmm?
Gentleman to my right.
Oh.
That's you.
We have no objection to, I have no objection to have the commission on the CPC, but I would like the Society on the CPC, too. So I don't think you have to change names. I think you just have to appoint someone from the, from the commission to be on the, on the CPC. That seems to be what you want. Why do you have to change names? Someone explain, get one of those lawyers that are sitting up there and see if they can't explain why you have to change the name.
Okay, well, speaking as a lawyer, you know, be, be kind. No, you're all right. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? There being none, the amendment would indefinitely postpone action on Article 15. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Try it again. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I declared a majority vote. The main motion is now to indefinitely postpone action on Article 15. All those in favor of indefinite postponement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared a majority. Article 15 is indefinitely postponed. Article 16 on the motion, Selectman Danny.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town accept Evangeline Drive, as laid out by the Board of Selectmen as a public way, and authorize the selectmen to accept or take by eminent domain easements for such public way, and any pertinent drainage or municipal services.
It's been seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, Selectman Danny. It's been seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, Selectman Danahue.
So, folks, this is a street that's off of Elm Street. It's a part of the Tilden Farm, and it was planned out, built, and a number of nice homes have been built on it. When the developer actually went before the planning board, they went forward, designed it according to the specifications. It's a brand-new road. We, as a town, have been trying to go back with a lot of the older roads, trying to bring them up to code, the ones who are private, not publicly owned, not owned by us, but privately owned by the people who live on it. This one is privately owned right now until we actually vote for it. So this is a really good article to be able to bring those people who live, those residents who pay taxes, into the town streets. The other benefit we get out of it is a part of our, what we call, Chapter ninety funding from the state. The more public roads you have, the more funds you get from the state. This is a win-win. Brand-new road, no betterments, nothing to those taxpayers who live on it, and will also include as a part of our roadway, which ultimately means that we'll get some funds from the state. Thank you.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Sanden.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In addition, the developer had brought before the street acceptance, before the street acceptance committee, as you see in the write-ups, the vote was two to one in accept the road, Evangeline, as a public way. And as you see in the write-up, the dissenting vote had to do with the current width of the road, but the road was built according to the specs at the time and was approved to build. Again, it adds to the additional roadways accepted in the town, increases our Chapter ninety funds. The Advisory Committee recommends fully the article on a majority, six to one vote. Thank you.
Discussion from the floor, gentleman to my right.
Yeah, I was going to say, Steve Bjorken. I'm a developer of Evangeline Drive, and as they said, we built exactly what was approved by the planning board, and this is merely the conclusion of our subdivision and having the developers move on and have the town accept the road. So I hope everybody will vote in favor. Thank you.
Further discussion, there being no one else at the mics. All those in favor of the motion in Article sixteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared a two-thirds vote. Now the moment we've been thirsting for. Article seventeen. Mr. Elder, I believe you're going to make the motion. Mr. Elder is the proponent on this citizen petition.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Situate as outlined in Article seventeen. That appears in the warrant. I am going to— if you can bear with me, I'm going to read through the article because— oh, I make a motion?
No, go ahead, go ahead. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion.
Okay.
So it's been moved as printed in the warrant, correct?
It's moved as printed in the warrant, but I am going to note that there's a couple of typos.
Okay, so here's your motion. I move as printed in the warrant with the following changes. Now read your typos.
Okay. I move as printed in the warrant with the following changes. I'm going to read— what we're asking for is to add the definition of a microbrewery to Section two hundred of the zoning bylaws, so it would now be a defined term. And a microbrewery would be defined as an entity where up to fifteen thousand barrels— one barrel equals thirty-one gallons— of beer is made annually and prepared for sale, both on-premise and wholesale to other establishments. Microbreweries are licensed by the United States Alcohol and Tobacco Tax and Trade Bureau, known as the TTP, as well as the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, known as the ABCC, to produce and sell beer and/or ale. A microbrewery sells to the public by one or more of the following methods: the traditional three-tier system, brewer to wholesaler to retailer to consumer; the two-tier system, brewer acting as wholesaler to retailer to consumer; and directly to the consumer through carryouts and/or onsite taproom sales. Secondly, we would add "microbrewery"— the defined term "microbrewery" to Section four oh two of the zoning bylaws, which is the Table of Use Regulations, under the Commercial Uses category in the following manner. Under commercial uses, microbrewery would be added. It would be permitted by special permit in the general business, harbor business, and commercial districts. And thirdly, we want to revise Section forty— four forty point five of the zoning bylaws, business districts, as follows: to allow for outdoor seating at a microbrewery. In a GB or HB district, all use is permitted as of right or by special permit, and all use as accessory thereto shall be conducted wholly within an enclosed building except for the following: one, use is permitted as of right in R1, R2, and R3 districts; outdoor seating or dining areas accessory to a restaurant, hotel, or microbrewery on the same premises and serving only persons seating at tables; parking lots for passenger automobiles—which is number three; number four, exterior signs as hereinafter permitted; number five, plants growing in the soil.
Okay, and that's everything?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Selectman Danahue. And Mr. Elder, when you're done, would you give the town clerk a complete copy of what you read off so she has it for the official record? It's been seconded. Discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Elder.
Yes. Just to give you a little background information on this, we'd like to open up a microbrewery in Situate. Kind of the short and sweet of it. My son currently works as a brewer for one of the largest microbreweries in the Pacific Northwest. I'm a thirty-seven-year resident of Situate myself. My son was raised in Situate, moved out to the Pacific Northwest a few years ago, left the corporate world after having an extended period of time as a pretty successful home brewer and somewhat noted home brewer. Really wanted to follow his passion, which was to open his own establishment up someday. Left the corporate world, joined a brewery in the Pacific Northwest, and has been doing that for the last two years. His goal is to come back east, open up his own microbrewery on the South Shore, ideally Situate specifically. We've looked at a number of different locations over the last few months, but our main focus has always been in Situate. There's a lot of great story to be told, there's a lot of community tie-ins, and a good story for establishing this entity in Situate. The problem that we face is that the zoning laws don't currently allow for a microbrewery where we want to put it, which is in the Green Bush section, which is already a business district, is already home to a number of very diverse businesses, restaurants, bakeries, a number of other businesses. We would like to establish the microbrewery there. And to do so, we feel like it really requires just a somewhat of a tweaking of the— of these current zoning laws. There's no defined term under definitions right now for a microbrewery. We want to add the definition that I just gave you. Secondly, we would add "microbrewery" to the Table of Regulated Uses—or the Table of Use Regulations for the GB, HB, and C districts. And third, we'd like to revise Section four forty point five, which already allows for outdoor seating at a restaurant or hotel in the business district. We want to include "microbrewery" in that also. We are very excited about the project. We think it's an opportunity to bring a diverse and exciting piece of business to Situate. The support that we've received, both inside of Town Hall and outside, has been very, very encouraging. We've gotten unanimous support from the selectmen, from the planning board, from the Advisory Committee, from the Economic Development Commission, and from just about everybody in town that we've had a chance to talk to about it. I don't know if you've seen the Situate Monthly Facebook page, but a story came out in The Mariner last week, which was a bit of a surprise to me, but it came out, and the Situate Monthly Facebook page just exploded. There was over three hundred and thirty likes for the project and over fifty very positive comments about this microbrewery project coming to the town. Again, we're very excited about it. We think it would be a great fit for the community. It's going to improve the— increase the tax base, provide employment opportunities, bring a degree of tourism, a reason for people to visit, an additional reason for people to visit town, opportunities at time with local merchants on certain promotions, and we think we have a very good opportunity to become a very integral part of the Situate business community.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Danahue.
Oh, sure, sorry. So the reason why they're here is because in our zoning bylaws, you can't have a microbrewery in the town of Situate. So what ultimately they're trying to do is just change certain definitions so you know what a microbrewery is, and then the areas and where it's going to go, and that's the business district. It's going to be based on a special permit. So what that means is they don't get their permit. They have to go through the process with the planning board to be able to get certain conditions in order to meet those conditions in the bylaw, and if they do, then a brewery can be made. I've talked to Ross. Ross had told me about it and the plan both he and his son have had, being able to do this. And it actually is a nice plan. I've actually talked to their proposed landlord, who actually is looking to try to relocate it in the area of Green Bush. And whether it happens or not, at least the plan is nice. They're going to take an old antique school that's down there being used as a barn, and then relocate it and put it on a nice property as part of their brew pub. So they're adding a new industry here in town that we haven't had. One of the first industries was the shipbuilding, and then, of course, our agricultural industry, and I think the one that we've had since the eighteen nineties have been tourism. So this is actually a nice proposal to add some kind of new industry or business that the town has been seeking to do, certainly with the Board of Selectmen as well as the planning board, with creating the Economic Development Commission. Be able to go out and find new ideas, try to generate new revenue, more foot traffic, and as Mr. Elder said, an opportunity for someone who grew up in Situate, was born in Situate, to return to Situate. Microbreweries are somewhat of recent phenomenon. They kind of came out in the late sixties into the seventies, and in the eighties, they actually took off. What's interesting is here in the state of Massachusetts—is there are a lot of microbreweries that have been created in the past fifteen years. Just on the South Shore alone, there were seven. Some people might know there's one down in Plymouth called Mayflower. Just six days ago, Bridgewater passed a microbrewery. So they're kind of trendy, no doubt about it, but it would be nice to have something here in the town of Situate that's going to keep somebody local, employ some people local, and probably improve the area down in Green Bush. Finally, the last item I just wanted to point out was that, you know, historically, we've probably looked— town hasn't had a microbrewery probably since prior to the age of prohibition. Historically, I was looking up and trying to find out from a historical book, if you want, Then and Now Situate, it's a great book. They referenced the tavern that used to be on Front Street, Dr. Parsons' office, that was torn down in about nineteen twenty-nine, but originally, the building that was there was a tavern that was built in sixteen ninety-seven. And what was interesting in reading through it was how, when they were tearing down the building and looking at this great building that was a tavern, there were questions about, was there a tavern or wasn't. Indeed, they saw the tavern itself, and they referenced it, saying that they marveled at it, that there was a tavern taproom still intact with the steep, narrow staircase that led up to the upstairs chamber. So as I said to Ross, I said, you know what? It's not so much you're creating a new industry or new use, you're just bringing back one that used to exist years ago. The board voted unanimously in favor of this. Thank you.
You know, John, the only thing I might add to that, and I think, as I recognize some of the faces in the crowd, some of the people here, their fathers and grandfathers might talk about the vibrant microbrewery culture in town during prohibition, especially in the Peggeti Beach area. But in any event, from the Advisory Committee, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you all for staying here till a little after ten o'clock at night, or for those of us who have not reset our watches, a little after eleven. What we're doing here tonight on this particular warrant is we're trying to keep our zoning bylaws contemporary and relevant. We're adding terms that are in the modern lexicon. We're adding a definition of microbrewery. We're adding "microbrewery" to a table of regulated use. And finally, we're allowing outdoor seating at a microbrewery. We're not approving a microbrewery, we're amending our zoning laws. So I encourage everybody to vote in favor of this, as did the Advisory Committee, who voted seven nothing in favor. Thank you.
Is anyone here from the planning board? Ah, Mr. Pritchard. Could you give us the report of the planning board, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is—I'm Steve Pritchard. I'm chairman of the planning board. Just to give you the planning board's report, we met—the planning board reports that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, a public hearing was held on this article on October twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, at which time the public hearing was closed, and the board voted unanimously to support passage of the— excuse me, of the article at the November second, two thousand and fifteen special town meeting. The planning board, together with many town officials, including the Economic Development Commission, is acutely aware of the need to expand the tax base by adding business and attracting new development. This article would allow a unique type of business, a microbrewery, in the business and commercial zoning districts, which can readily absorb additional growth. The planning board supports passions of this article because it will encourage this type of business that will benefit the town by creating new jobs, stimulating tourism, and expanding the tax base. The planning board is also aware that the article requires approval by special permit, and that special permit would be through the planning board. So we're not approving an individual's request for a microbrewery here, but only suggesting that we allow the creation of microbreweries in the town of Situate with the proper review and process. Thank you.
Discussion from the floor, lady to my left.
Yes, Tracy Kelly, sixty-one Collier Road.
Ma'am.
I personally love the idea of a microbrewery, but I'd be interested to understand its impact on the water supply, because it takes a lot of water to make beer.
Yeah, the impact on the water supply is going to be minimal. Our projections call for first-year production of about seven hundred and fifty barrels of beer, which equates to about— fifty— oh, I'm sorry. Equates to about a hundred and sixteen thousand gallons of water in total, and that breaks down to about twenty-two thousand gallons of actual beer. And then for each gallon of beer that's produced, it requires about another four gallons of water for the cleaning process. Now, you cook something, you clean up the stuff that you cooked it in, the equipment that you cooked it in. So a hundred and sixteen thousand gallons of water is about the equivalent of what a household of four people uses during the course of a year, based on certain statistics on the town's website and other sources. So the impact of the water usage is very minimal.
Gentleman to my right.
Steve Bjorken. I'm just curious, for the proponent, does a yes vote on this get each of us a free beer? No, all kidding aside, it's nice to laugh once in a while. I've watched Ross bring this through most of the boards and listened to the presentations on it, and I study zoning in this town night and day, as probably a lot of you know. I can't find anything wrong with this. It's great to see you come forward with something like this, and I would urge everybody to vote for it. I can't find a downside.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Gentleman at the center of the mic.
Larry Howell, Moreland Road. Just a technical question. Far as pollution, smells or disposal of any waste from this process?
Yeah.
Is there such a thing?
I'm sorry?
Is there—
Well, there's going to be waste, yeah. I mean, the grain is cooked, and the result of that is something called wort, which is actually transferred into another tank, and hops and yeast is added to it, and that's what makes the beer. The residue that's left from that is the spent grain, spent yeast, which is actually collected and distributed to local farmers that they use for feed, for their livestock.
Recycled.
Recycled, yes.
What about smells and odors?
You know, there's not really a discernible smell that we can determine. There's a smell—it's like baking— cooking cereal. If there's any smell whatsoever—I know Laura Harbaugh—
If there's any smell whatsoever, I know Laura Harbottle, the town planner, contacted the town of Plymouth. The town of Plymouth has three microbreweries in it right now, and the town planner in Plymouth said that there was absolutely no complaints about any odor from, from any of their microbreweries. So we don't, we don't anticipate that whatsoever.
Gentleman to my left.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nolan Kelly from the Economic Development Commission. As stated, the EDC voted unanimously in favor of the zoning bylaw language. We have had the opportunity to work very closely with Mr. Elder over the last several months on this initiative, and are very impressed with the work that's been put into it and the opportunity that he's presented. We do feel that these types of updates to the zoning bylaws are critical in helping Situate become a more business-friendly environment, so we support it from that standpoint. Specific to the microbrewery business, we feel it will add to the character of the town, fitting very nicely with tourism, with restaurants, allowing employment, taxes, tax revenue, and also many unique branding opportunities. So we appreciate the, the opportunity, Mr. Elder, and would recommend the audience votes in favor of this. Thank you.[1743.13][1743.13](APPLAUSE).
Gentleman to my right.
Richard Travers, 57, Old Oak and Bucket Road in Situate. I move the question.[1753.26][1753.26](APPLAUSE).
Well, without putting it to a vote, are we ready for the vote? Okay. This requires a 2/3s vote. We'll try it by voice vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 17 to create microbrewery zoning signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous.[1778.46][1778.46](APPLAUSE). Before I accept a motion to adjourn, I just want to thank you all for your patience and see you in the spring. Mr. Vignani moves to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Danny. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand in adjournment.